The meeting to order. This is the Cape Elizabeth zoning board meeting of Tuesday, March 25th, 2014. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2014. First, is there any discussion or comment on these minutes? Not hearing any comments or discussion issues raised. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2014, ZBA meeting.
Any seconds?
Second.
Mike, seconds. All in favor? So the minutes from the February 25th, 2014, meeting have been approved. Five to nothing. I don't believe there's any old business pending before the board. So we'll now move on to the new business. And the first issue in front of the board for today is number one, to hear the request of Harold and Mary Friedman of 36 Surf Road to appeal the code enforcement officer's decision to grant a temporary, partial certificate of occupancy for the project at 40 Surf Road, map U-5, lot 42, that is being constructed under building permit 109994.
My name's Martha Gaethwaite, and I represent Harold and Mary Friedman, who live at 36 Surf Road. I think some of you folks were here, when we were here a year ago, appealing the issuance of the permit. And I will just go through some of the procedural history for those of you who were not here the last time. We're here because on June 8th, 2012, unbeknownst to my clients, a permit was issued for work on a non-conforming structure, on a non-conforming lot at 40 Surf Road. My clients were not aware of the building permit being issued and did not find out about it until early October 2012, when they saw workmen show up at the site. They immediately approached their neighbors, the Mallorys, who own the property at 40 Surf Road, asked them what the project was about, asked them to stop the project until there was an opportunity to have the permit reviewed. They also filed an appeal here, and the decision of the board at the time was that because the appeal had not been filed within 30 days, we needed to go to the Superior Court and ask for permission of the judge to come back here so you would reach a substantive review. That matter is still pending in the Superior Court. What has happened in the meantime is, in November, a temporary certificate of occupancy was issued for this project. We filed a timely appeal of that certificate of occupancy, and we are challenging it on two grounds. The first ground is, for the reasons that we were challenging the permit to begin with back a year ago, and I understand procedurally that's before the Superior Court, and you folks probably cannot decide the issues surrounding the normal high-water mark and the improper issuance of the permit to begin with, but I'd be happy to talk to you about those issues if anybody has questions about them. The narrow issue that we're here about tonight, however, concerns the issuance of the certificate of occupancy and actually underscores my client's concerns with this whole process and why we are here tonight. What happened in October of 2012 is that when my clients saw workmen at the property, they, in addition to going next door to their neighbors, came here to the town office to ask for a copy of the building permit and the application. They were provided with materials from a project that had happened in 2006, and then they found out that Mr. Smith was on administrative leave. Mr. Smith was a former code enforcement officer, and they tried to contact him to find out exactly what had been permitted, and because he was on administrative leave, he could not respond to their questions. Eventually, the town found what was presented to be the permit that had been issued for this project. The file, however, in the town office contains very little information with respect to actually what Mr. Smith was looking at when he issued that permit. As part of the Superior Court proceedings, we've had the opportunity to depose Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith has testified under oath that in May or June of 2012, at the time he issued the permit, he had been spoken to by Mr. McGovern, who expressed concerns about his job performance and suggested that he should not be employed as a code enforcement officer. Apparently, Mr. Smith stayed on the job until October, when the decision was made that he would go out on administrative leave. I do not know the specifics beyond what Mr. Smith testified to, but I do know that he testified that in May or June, at the time that this permit was issued, he had been told that he was not performing his job and he should be looking for work elsewhere. That may explain why we don't have anything in the file. All I can tell you is that when the certificate of occupancy was issued last November, we went back to the town office to try to find out exactly what was on file now. What is on file with the town office is a building permit application. You have a portion of that building permit application in the materials that are provided as part of the board packet. What you don't have, and if I might just provide to you, this is part of the town file, but it's page two of the permit application. I think in your board packet, you have pages one, three, and four. In the application that was submitted for this permit, the representation was made by the owner and the owner's builder that there would be no change in the footprint of the structure, that it would stay within the existing footprint. The representation was also made that there would be no addition of bedrooms. A permit was then issued, you do have a copy of that permit in your file materials. What's interesting to note is that the permit that was issued refers to a permit application that is not the permit application that is in the town files and that was represented to us as being the permit application that supports the permit. So we don't really know when this permit refers to application number 1200319, what that means. We've been told that the 434 permit is the operative application. So there's a significant question about exactly what Mr. Smith was reviewing, what Mr. Smith approved, and there's no question, however, that what is out there now and for which a certificate of occupancy has been issued is different than what the town files say is authorized. And I can have my clients testify, or I can make the representation to you, that there is now a new porch in the, on the structure that is outside the existing footprint. In addition to that, there is a new stair tower and foundation built that is outside of the existing footprint. It is my understanding from the town files that the certificate of occupancy is allowing the occupancy of two new bedrooms, which again is different than the representation made in the application in front of you. In addition to that, this is a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot that does not even meet the minimum bulk standards under your ordinance. Specifically, a portion of the structure is within nine feet of the property line. It has been and remains our position that a code enforcement officer has no authority to issue any type of permit or certificate of occupancy for a structure that is beyond or within those absolute limits that are set by your ordinance. The absolute limit set by your ordinance is 10 feet, this is within nine feet, and I believe that's undisputed, that it's within nine feet. So our position is that the code enforcement officer didn't have authority to issue the permit to begin with, but if we're not going to talk about that because it's the subject of an appeal with the Superior Court, at least he does not have authority to issue a certificate of occupancy for a structure that is that non-conforming. But to make matters worse, as part of the construction of this project, we have the builder building into the nine-foot setback in order to create this dormer effect, and I have photos of that for the board to look at. That is the picture of a portion of the wall that is within the nine feet, and that picture shows an overhang that was built into the nine-feet setback. There's no mention of that in any of the town files. I don't believe there is any reference to it in any of the plans, and I do not understand how a code enforcement officer can approve construction that goes further into the impermissible setback that was already existing. So again, we have a lot of issues with the issuance of the permit, substantive issues. We believe that this project exceeds the limitations set by the shoreline zoning ordinance. I understand that the Mallorys are taking the position that they do not want us to discuss that tonight, that we're going to leave that for the Superior Court to decide whether it comes back to you, to decide. I don't want to waive that position, and I'm happy to discuss the substantive part of the appeal, if you would like to hear it. But for tonight, our major concern is that the town files do not describe accurately the work that is out there. The work that is out there does not conform to what is in the town files, and there was no basis, in our view, for a certificate of occupancy to be issued for something that really isn't properly permitted. So I know I've thrown a lot of facts at you, but basically, the bottom line is, we have a structure that is too close to the property line, within the 75-feet normal high-water mark, on a lot where there is more coverage than allowed by the shoreline zoning ordinance. It exceeds the 30 percent limitations for volume and square footage. It increases the existing footprint in violation of the representation made in the application. The permit refers to an application that nobody at the town office has been able to produce for us. The application that has been produced for us has been violated because we do have an expansion of the existing footprint. So those are just some of the reasons why we're here tonight and why we believe that the code enforcement officer improperly issued the certificate of occupancy on November 13th of 2013. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has. I understand that counsel for the Mallorys will want to have an opportunity to speak, and I'd like to have an opportunity to respond to that if it's acceptable to the board. But we believe this is a very serious matter, that you should be able to go to the town office, know what somebody's applied for, know what somebody has been permitted to build, and then have an assurance that the town has determined that what's out there complies with what was permitted. So that's my initial comments. If I'd have the opportunity to speak after, we hear from counsel for the Mallorys, I'd appreciate that.
Great. I'd like to hear from the Mallorys counsel, and then I'm going to just follow up with Ben, just to get some further background about the issuance of the permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Bannon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Attorney John Bannon, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Baird and Leah Mallory in opposition to the Friedman's administrative appeal. I'd like to say, this was not, well, this was not where I was going to start, but tonight is the first time I heard an allegation that the building permit refers to an application that either does not exist, or cannot be found, or cannot be ascertained in the town's files. If the board looks through the submissions that you've received, both from me and from Martha, you'll see repeated references to a particular permit application number. It's reproduced over and over again in these materials. I simply don't know what that's about. I wish I could help you. I also don't know anything about an allegation that there is a dormer that projects into, within nine feet of any boundary line. I presume that the Friedman's, or that Attorney Gaethwaite was referring to, the common boundary line between the Mallorys and the Friedman's, but this is complete news to me, and as far as I know, that is not accurate at all. To the contrary, the dormer to which Attorney Gaethwaite was referring was purposely stepped back from the non-conforming setback of the existing first floor so that it did not encroach into the setback. That's my understanding of the facts, and it's my understanding of what's in the town's file. It appears as though the Friedman's have some frustrations with how the town has been operating its code enforcement office. They're entitled to express those grievances, but the issue here is whether this board has any grounds to invalidate the certificate of occupancy, that, the partial certificate of occupancy that the code enforcement officer granted that's here. So let's please try to keep our eyes on the ball, so to speak. The issue for you tonight is solely, did the code enforcement officer violate the ordinance, or make an error, or misinterpret the ordinance when he granted the partial certificate of occupancy to allow the Mallorys to occupy two bedrooms? This matter is really quite simply disposed of. There are two decisions by the main Supreme Court that are directly on point. We don't always have that luxury of having case law that's directly on point, but this is one of them. What the law court has said twice, and has never said to the contrary, is that an appeal from the granting of a certificate of occupancy is not a substitute for an appeal from the granting of the building permit. Therefore, if there is no proper appeal from the granting of the building permit itself, the legitimacy of the building permit is not before the board, or the court, or anyone else, on an appeal from the granting of a certificate of occupancy. Essentially, you must assume the validity of the building permit. The issue that you can decide, and that is legitimately before this board, is whether the work that the Mallorys actually did on their house complies with the application materials they submitted to Bruce Smith in 2012, and this, this project, I believe, has been monitored since then by Code Enforcement Officer McDougall, so his views are relevant as well. But the, let's, we first need to establish what's the database for determining whether what the Mallorys built complies with the building permit. What does that mean? There is not just one source of information that tells you what the building permit authorizes. The Friedman's seem to be suggesting that you must look slavishly at the application for the building permit, and really at nothing else. And because in their interpretation, the way the Mallorys builder described whether or not there'd be an increase in the number of bedrooms, or whether or not there'd be an increase in the footprint, is the only thing that you should consider, and if there in fact is an increase in the number of bedrooms, or if there is a change in the existing footprint, then the certificate of occupancy is invalid. That is just plain wrong. What is so obvious it hardly needs saying is that the building permit application requires each applicant to submit with the application plans. Not, you can't just submit that cursory application that is rather cryptic and hard to understand. You have to submit, depending on the sophistication of the project, either reasonably detailed plans or very detailed plans. In this case, as I pointed out in my letters, the Mallorys architects submitted to Mr. Smith 24 full-size pages of architectural drawings and renderings of this proposed project. There is no allegation, I have seen none, I see none in the papers that the Friedman's have filed, nor what they have said tonight, that anything the Mallorys have built departs from the scope of those plans. The plans show what bedrooms were going to be built, and the Mallorys built bedrooms in accordance with those plans. The plans showed a bump out from one small portion of the house for a stairwell. The Mallorys built that stairwell in compliance with the plans. The plans also showed a vestibule, or a porch, or whatever you want to call it, on the front of the house. The Mallorys built that in accordance with the plans. The plans in this case are so precise that I'd like to advert to something that Attorney Gaethwaite's comments brought up about this dormer. Again, I don't know what she is referring to, but as the project was getting underway, Bruce Smith was careful enough to consider the fact of whether constructing a second story, a second-story addition above a non-conforming wall was allowed or not. He took the position, I think correctly, that the second-floor addition couldn't encroach into the setback if the bottom floor was, was non-conforming, and that we needed to step it back to the point where it conformed. So we did, and our architects prepared a new set of plans. Bruce told us to do this, we did it. We submitted them apparently in November, showing the exact step back that he requested. I'm sure that you will want to confer with your present code enforcement officer about what his opinion is about whether the Mallorys have built their, their structure in compliance with the plans. But I submit to you that the written materials that have been presented to you by everyone in this case, both sides, provide no evidence that what was built was not in compliance with the plans, which are a signal, or signal part of the application. And my last point on that, that particular issue, would be to point out that if the building permit application were paramount, you would expect that that would be what the property owner has to keep on-site and post. If, I'm sure the board's already familiar with this, but the standard building permit application states that the approved plans must be retained on the job along with the permit until final inspection has been made. It doesn't say anything about maintaining the building permit application on-site. Once the permit is granted, the application practically, I'm not saying entirely, but practically falls away, or is of virtually minimal importance. What matters is what was shown on the plans and whether the property owner complied with them. I think that's a very simple way for the board to dispose of this case. I would suspect that the board is not anxious to wade into the issues of collateral estoppel or issue preclusion, but I will simply, I'll go through that as briefly as possible, and we can explore it more if you see fit. This is, this, this administrative appeal is now the third time that the Friedman's have in one way or another challenged the Mallorys' building permit. The first time was before this board. The board ruled that that appeal was untimely. As Attorney Gaethwaite mentioned, the Friedman's filed a Rule 8B appeal from this board's decision, challenging its determination that their appeal was untimely. That's number two. Actually, no, we've got four. Number three is the one that raises the issue with regard to collateral estoppel or issue preclusion. This project needed not just municipal permits, but ones from, or one from the DEP, namely a PBR, a permit by rule, for performing work within 25 feet of a water body. And one of the criteria for granting, for the DEP's ability to grant such a PBR, is whether the proposed project complies with the local shoreline zoning ordinance. So, and as I think the board is well aware, shoreline zoning is a creature of the state. They have ultimate oversight over shoreline zoning. We often refer to the shoreline zoning coordinators and so forth for their interpretation of shoreline zoning, because they're more used to dealing with varied issues than we are. But in any event, the DEP is tasked by regulation to determine whether the application that is before it on the PBR conforms with the local shoreline zoning regulation. The Friedman's were entitled to challenge the PBR by any means they wanted, and many people would perhaps agree with an aggressive strategy of appealing every permit that is granted by any agency or any agent that would facilitate this project. But the problem with doing that is that if the administrative and judicial process is completed as to one of these permits in a manner that is adverse to the Friedman's and final, the Friedman's cannot come back here now a fourth time and ask this board to consider whether there was a violation or there was something wrong with the permit when it was originally issued. As I point out in the materials, Justice Joyce Wheeler of the Superior Court, in October of last year, I believe, I don't have the date right in front of me, upheld the DEP's determination, after a very involved and skillfully litigated case on a Rule 8C appeal, that the DEP correctly found that the project, the Mallorys' project, conformed with the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance. The Friedman's did not appeal from the Superior Court's judgment to that effect. And I know we've got quite a few attorneys on board, some not, but you who are attorneys know the consequences of not appealing from a, from a Superior Court decision. That is, that it becomes final. It becomes immune to challenge in any way, in any other form, whether it's another court or an administrative agency or anything else. Therefore, and I'll wrap up this esoteric issue now, because the Superior Court has now issued a final and binding judgment, binding on these parties, that the Mallory project does comply with the Cape Elizabeth zoning, shoreline zoning regulations, there's nothing left for this board ever to decide to the contrary. The, the court has spoken, and under the doctrine of collateral estoppel or issue preclusion, you don't get to come back for another bite at the apple. You get one shot at a court decision, and you have to live with it or appeal it, and the Friedman's did not. It's too late now. It has been determined judicially and finally that the Mallorys' addition complies with the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance, and that is the end of the story everywhere in the courts, here, everywhere. Unless the board has questions, I will retire for now. Thank you.
Before we return to Attorney Gaethwaite's rebuttal, we just take a couple seconds to speak with Ben. to speak with Ben? Can you give us some background from your perspective, and at least from my perspective? Perhaps some of the board members have other questions, but I'm just interested in your process and what you did to determine that you should issue the temporary occupancy permit.
Sure. First off, this permit was issued seven months prior to me being employed here, so I can't speak to how the permit was issued or what the materials were that the permit was issued based upon. But when I got here, January 22 of 2013, there were a set of plans for this project that I assumed to be the approved plans for the project, and I've assumed them to be the approved plans up till today and continue. On May 1, 2013, I inspected the framing, the plumbing, and the electrical work, and it all passed inspection, and it was consistent with the approved plans. On May 14, 2013, I inspected the insulation, and the insulation met code requirements. In November of 2013, Craig Cooper of Rainbow Construction called and requested a partial certificate of occupancy so that two bedrooms could be moved into the newly finished space, and the old bedrooms would become part of a work area for the next phase of the project. It's not uncommon to issue a partial certificate of occupancy when a family is trying to continue living in the house during the renovation. The work conforms to the approved plans and all related building, electrical, plumbing, and energy codes.
Ben, do you know what was the date of the plans, roughly?
This, this plan date is January 20, 2012, on the full plan set, and then there's partial plan sets that were revised September 24, 2012.
So you're looking at both sets when you're making your inspections?
Yes.
Chair, I have a question for them.
Go ahead.
How do you know that these are approved in the file?
They were, some of the plans were in the building permit file, and the rolled plans are kept in the code office. So there was one set of rolled plans in the code office that said Mallory on them, and have the map and lot and the address, and because these plans are too big to go in a file cabinet, so those were in the code office, and the revision plans were in the code file.
And the Mallory's have always been referring to those two sets that you described as January and September 2012?
Not sure what you mean.
There's no other sets that we're talking about?
Not that I'm aware of.
And is there ever any other indication on plans that these are the approved set of plans, or usually, since you've taken over as the code enforcement officer, that's how you know if there are plans in the file and a permit's been issued, your assumption is that those are the plans that were approved?
That's correct.
Ben, you said you were working for two sets of plans, one dated January 20, 2012?
Yes.
One dated September 24, 2012?
Yes.
Is that right? Is there any import or meaning or anything we shouldn't infer by virtue of the fact that the second set of plans was dated, revised after the date the building permit was issued?
Yeah, Attorney Bannon spoke to that a bit, and he would be able to answer the question better than I can, because I wasn't here. But my understanding is they realized a portion of the second floor was a foot over the setback line, so they did a new set of plans to push the second floor in a foot so it meets the 10-foot setback.
So, the plans then, and your inspections, do you believe that the setback is at 10 feet, or is it at nine feet?
The setback of the existing structure is nine feet, and the setback of the second floor is 10 feet in the area in question.
Any other questions from the board for Ben for now?
Good question, Ben. There was a question as to whether the building permit for which the certificate of occupancy was issued is complete in the file, in the code enforcement?
I believe it to be, other than the larger rolled plans that have been in my office since the day I started working.
So, from your perspective, then, the CEO that you issued is consistent with the plans that the town has?
Yes.
Any other questions for Ben for now? Okay. Attorney Gathway, if you'd like to return?
Mr. McDougal, you started in January of 2013 with the town, is that correct? So you have no personal knowledge of what Mr. Smith had in front of him and what he was using for plans back in June of 2012? Fair to say?
Yeah, I can't hold a conversation with you.
Okay. Let me, I can make the representation to the board that when my client came to the town office in early October, there were no plans on file, with the exception of some folded-up plans that were eventually found. Those are sketch plans. They deal with the normal high-watermark issues. Those sketch plans have a stamp on them to show when they would have been received by the town office. The file, on file with the town, contains a red fluorescent 3x5 card, and that is dated October 24 of 2012. You may be able to see it in the file that I just looked at two weeks ago in the town office. That October 24, 2012, 3x5 card refers to the rolled-up plans. There is, at least the plans that were provided to us, contain no date stamp with respect to when they were received by the town. And again, my client made multiple trips here to try to get the plans. We finally filed a Freedom of Information Act request to get the plans, and the plans that are here and dated January 2012 were not provided in response to those requests. I think if you look through that folder, you'll find that fluorescent red card that says the plans are in the office, and they're dated October 24, 2012, which was after we had complained that we did not know what was permitted, we did not know what had been applied for, and we wanted to get a copy of the plans. So that is the first problem that we have as we're sitting here tonight. Their file now has plans in it, but whether or not those were plans that Mr. Smith had relied on, frankly, is not supported by the record, nor by Mr. Smith's testimony at his deposition. He has no file. We asked for copies of Mr. Smith's daily records and daily activities, which the town keeps as part of their computer system. There was no meeting with respect to the architects that was identified in any of those computer records. There was a meeting with Mr. Mallory, with Dr. Mallory, and with a gentleman named Mr. Coombs involving the sketch plan for the normal high-watermark in May of 2012. But in terms of any type of review of plans, any sort of reference to plans, there is none. What you do have on file and is clearly dated is the application. The application says there will be no change in the existing footprint. Are you supposed to ignore an application that says there is not going to be a change in the existing footprint when we've heard that there is a change in the existing footprint? So I think there's a threshold question about what was permitted, and that's not Mr. McDougal's fault, because he wasn't here. He's tried to put pieces together after Mr. Smith left. But Mr. Smith really could not explain to us what he had done or how he had done it. At his deposition, I'll represent to you, I said, "I don't see any notes. I don't see any plans. I don't see anything to support what you claim to have been your decision." And he said, "Well, I must have done it, because I wouldn't have issued the permit otherwise." But in terms of finding the documentary proof to show some sort of thought process to say that this project, which was a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot within nine feet of the property line, within the normal, 75 feet of the normal high-watermark, that it already had expansions to it, to suggest that this is a legal structure, there's just nothing there. And with respect to the certificate of occupancy, the photograph that I showed you, and if I could just approach the board and just explain better what I did not actually explain before.
May I have your copy of this photograph?
Sure. Joe, this is someone who talked about the deposition. So, this is the first floor of the property. This is the first floor of the property, that's within nine feet of my client's property line. And we do not, and so what happened is, and we don't believe it's legal to make this non-conforming by pushing it back, and we are, there's only ordinance that allows it back. There's only ordinance, as I'm sure you know, says it should be read in the most restrictive manner, not in a legal manner. So I don't believe it is legal to push it back, but clearly, that was not something that was on file in June 2012, because it was a September 2012 plan, apparently. But more fundamentally is, you can see here, the structure goes towards the property line, not a lot of it perhaps, but if you're within nine feet of it, your property line, this is the illegal work going towards the property line. And I know that McDougal has not been putting to the lawsuit or to the surveys that he provided as part of the lawsuit, but that work we had complained about in our hearing we had in the late part of 2012, for Mr. McDougal is here. So that work is closer to the property line than the existing work, but the existing work is already within the nine feet, which is not legal. We do not believe that a code enforcement officer could have approved pushing this back a foot, to show the basis of the ordinance to do that. Even if that is okay, there's nothing in the plans that is designed for them to say we can, in addition to pushing this back, move it out into the setback. So that is just one problem with the way the file is located in the town office right now. We simply have guesswork about what Mr. Smith actually approved, and you can look at the plans, but the plans that were shown to me when I came to the town office did not have a date stamp on them from June of 2012. And the plans that do have a stamp on them as being received are this one or two pages of sketch plans prepared by William Coombs. So in terms of the problems with what was permitted, I again suggest that the only thing that's clear in the file is that there's a permit application that says there's not going to be any change in the existing footprint. That's a very clear, a very unambiguous statement, and I think there's no question but that there has been a vestibule built outside the footprint, there has been a stair tower built outside the footprint, and we have not been given the opportunity to inspect the property. We have a request pending with Judge Cole to be able to inspect the property that has been resisted by the Mallory's, but we know that there was a very large concrete truck that came to the property, and we believe, but we have not been able to get onto that side of the house to verify it, we believe that there has been additional foundation work done to the C-word section of the house, on the part of the house that you can't see from my client's property. So we believe that there have been a number of extensions of the footprint in violation of what has been represented to the town as part of the application process. Counsel has referenced law court cases. I would refer you to the Bracket Decision versus the Town of Rangelley, where the law court said, "You have to look at the application to see what was permitted." Right now, what we have is a card that said, "You are permitted to do the work," and it references a permit application that, again, is not the permit application that we've all been talking about. It's a different permit application, potentially with different plans, we don't know. But the reality is, as we sit here today, there is no documentary basis for concluding that the work that was done on this property complies with the plans, first because we don't know which plans were approved, second because it violates what the application said, and third, there's nowhere in any of the plans that suggests that you would interfere more into the nine-foot setback than you already are. And I don't believe, and I'll defer to Mr. McDougal's expertise, but I don't believe that there's any statement or diagram in those plans to depict this intrusion into the setback. So those are major issues that we have in terms of procedurally, if I could just respond to Attorney Bannon's statements, right now, we have asked Judge Cole for permission to come back to you so that you can reach the merits of my client's appeal. Judge Cole has not made a decision on that, in part, because with the agreement of the parties, because of Mr. Smith's somewhat extraordinary departure from the town and the omissions in the record, the parties have agreed that we need to try to piece together some of this information, so we are taking depositions and we're exchanging documents. So the fact that we, there's a suggestion that we keep on appealing. We have not kept on appealing. We appealed once. We're trying to get facts together so that we can come back to you with a full set of information, when Judge Cole allows us to do that. The reason that I recommended that we file an appeal of the certificate of occupancy is that I did not want to be in the situation where procedurally later on, somebody would suggest, "Oh, you should have appealed that certificate of occupancy, so that is why we are here." We're not trying to, all my clients have ever wanted, and all they wanted back in the fall of 2012, was to have you folks look at all the evidence and call it the way you see it, and make an up or down vote on the merits of their arguments. And instead of that, the procedural argument was made that they would not allow us to present the merits of the case to you, and they've made us appeal to the court. If they had not objected, we could have presented the merits of the appeal at that time, and we could have avoided going to the court. But that was a decision that the Mallory's made to make us have to appeal and to block our ability to present our ability to present our substantive appeal back in the fall of 2012. With respect to the DEP application, the Mallorys never applied for a DEP application. We contacted the DEP and said, "Is there an application on file? Has their permit been issued?" And the DEP ultimately issued a permit by rule, but I will represent to the board that they made that decision based on substantive information that was not provided to us, and without any notice to us that the architects had provided information to the DEP. The DEP made a decision, and we got notice of it on Christmas Eve, and were not given an opportunity to respond to it.
I've got to reject that this is all investigated before, and we're going to use some of the, you know that.
And you know what's accurate, John? The reality is that all my clients have ever wanted is for this board to be able to fairly and objectively look at all the evidence and call it the way they see it. That's all we have ever asked for. We're here tonight because as part of this process, if I were not to have filed an appeal, I would have expected another procedural argument that would have been made when we finally get back in front of the board after Judge Cole hopefully grants our Rule ADB appeal to come back and see you again. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, this is a serious matter. This is a non-conforming house on a non-conforming lot that we believe has been way overbuilt. It interferes with my client's property, my client's abilities to use their property, and we appreciate very much your time and your patience. I understand that you're volunteers, so I will sit down and not take any more of your time unless you have some questions that you would like me to answer.
And does anybody have any questions for Attorney Gateway at this time?
I've got a question. I'm not a lawyer, so.
Okay.
Sorry if this question, if this isn't the way that the case is being carried out in the courts, but you said you just deposed Mr. Smith.
Was he ever asked what set of plans he based the building on?
Permit law? Right. Mr. Smith, we showed him plans. He said, "I guess those are the plans." My memory is that I asked him questions about the stamps on the plans, either on the record or off the record, and he's the person who told me, "Well, they should be stamped. I don't know why they're not stamped."
So this is the January 20th and September 24th plan?
Right.
That then is assumed are the plans?
Right. And so we asked him, I asked him, "Where are the calculations, for example, to show how much impervious surface there is on this lot?" Don't have them. "Where are the calculations that show what the 30% volume calculations are?" Don't have them. "Where are the calculations about the 30% square footage?" Don't have them. "Why is it that we have a normal high watermark that is based on a 1929 plan that talks about mean high water and not the Cape Elizabeth zoning ordinance?" And he basically said that, if I'm, and I have a copy of his transcript here, I can get the exact quote, but basically, he said that he thought it would be more restrictive to apply the, a different high watermark to the Mallorys, and he didn't think that was fair. And I asked him if anybody had trained him that under the zoning ordinance, particularly with a non-conforming structure, you are supposed to view the ordinance in a matter that is more restrictive instead of less restrictive. And my memory is that he told me he had not been trained.
Any other questions from the board for Attorney Gateway?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Attorney Bennett?
Perhaps we could take a moment and let our heads stop spinning and return to the issue that is before the board. The issue before the board is, have the freedmen shown that the Mallorys built anything in their addition that was contrary to the plans that were approved for this project? They object that there is not absolutely perfect certainty that the plans that are where you'd expect to find the plans are the plans, or that the red note in the file may have some sinister meaning or not. I was trying to recall what Occam's razor is. Perhaps those of you who are smarter than me can remember that, but I think that a popular translation of it is that if you hear hoofbeats, don't look for zebras. The most likely, the explanation that takes the fewest number of steps is likely, is most likely to be the correct one. The only way that you can find that the Mallorys built their addition contrary to the plans is if you reject the most logical inference from all of the facts that have been presented to you. And I respectfully submit that this is not something the board should or even wants to do. Thank you.
Any questions for Attorney Bennett before you go?
Attorney Bennett, I have a couple of questions for you.
I'm sorry.
Unless.
No, go ahead.
I'll just, I took down some notes, and perhaps you can add some clarity to these. Is that, are the Mallorys able to confirm the date of the plans that they submitted to the code enforcement officer?
I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing, and I just turned up my hearing aid. Please, again.
Can the Mallorys confirm the date of the plans that were submitted, either with their planning application or subsequently?
Can the Mallorys?
Yes.
Would you like them to? I can. There's no question about what they are.
What dates are they?
Pardon me?
What are the dates in the plans that were submitted?
They are January something for the first set, and they're September, I think, 24, 2012 for the second set. There are only two sets of plans. There's one date on one, and there's another date on the other, and that's the only dates that are on any of the plans.
Thank you. When the Mallorys submitted their building application, they did not seek a variance for any of the setbacks. Is that correct?
That is correct, because they didn't need one.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney Bennett?
Thank you.
Is there anybody here, anybody in the public who would like to comment on this before we close the discussion? Okay. Hearing nobody. I guess I'd like to open it up for discussion for the board. Anybody would like to start?
First of all, Ben, is it?
Sure.
Okay. Then, the extension that was shown in the photograph by Attorney Gateway, is, in your opinion, is that, is that shown?
Yes. It's shown on the plan right here in front of me, and it was built per the plan.
Okay. Thanks.
And we recognize, of course, that it may or may not be water under the dam, but it's at the nine-foot setback, not 10 feet. It's in violation of the setback.
That's, that's.
Let me ask a question.
That's the section of the house that was existing at the nine-foot setback.
So existing non-conformity?
Existing non-conformity. They stepped the second floor in and built that 45-degree angle piece in order to, so the house doesn't fill with water.
Any other questions for Ben? Any general thoughts?
I had a couple of questions for you, Ben. There's a provision, I can't find it now, but there's an obligation when there's a issuing of a occupancy permit. What steps do you look, what steps do you do to go through that process to when you actually execute the occupancy permit?
From the building inspection perspective?
Well, the way I see the ordinance is that essentially, it's on your remit. And so that you look at the file and go through a checklist, if you will, in that if there's an issue that does come up, you have a process by which you investigate and see if there's an issue.
Yes.
And that was done in this case?
Yeah.
Sorry. If there was an issue that had come up, you would investigate it.
Yeah.
If it was not an issue, so hence you issued the partial occupancy permit.
That's correct. The building construction met all the required building codes, and it appeared to meet all the plans and specifications that I was privy to, so I issued the certificate of occupancy.
So this is to the board as a whole. How do we reconcile the two allegations that it's in the setback versus it's not
If it's in the setback, I think Ben just answered that question. If it's in the setback, it was an existing, what I'm hearing, it was at nine feet under the original plans. I mean, I guess a question is, prior to the renovation, was the existing footprint at nine feet? Right? So is it, was it an existing non-conformity at the time you started the renovation? Is that what you're driving at?
Yes, and so the setback of 10 feet, is that right? So the second story is in further recessed back, so it's not an enlargement of the non-conformity. Is that correct?
If the, prior to the renovation, the footprint, you know, that, whatever that corner is, I don't have the plans in front of me.
Yeah.
You know, at nine feet, yeah.
Okay. I have no more questions.
Can I make a clarifying point?
Sure.
What the argument of Attorney Gateway is the slight overhang that's shown here. And the second floor was stepped in, and there's a very small 45 in order to keep the rain out, and that overhangs the existing wall slightly by a few inches. That is something that's been allowed in Cape Elizabeth forever, as far as I know. Slight roof overhangs in order to shed water, in order to have a healthy structure. So they, so that is, that is the point, that that additional, that small additional triangle of a few inches in order to shed the rain. I don't believe that's a setback violation. The, in Cape Elizabeth, the setbacks have always been measured, to the best of my knowledge, to the edge of the siding, and a small overhang has been allowed.
And again, these are the plans that were in the office that you based your granting of the occupancy permit on.
Right. That's, you know, I didn't, I didn't review this for zoning compliance. These are the set of approved plans, so I don't.
Right.
You know, I don't, I really don't think we can discuss whether or not that meets the zoning setback or not. This is the set of plans we have in front of us. This is what I based my occupancy permit on.
You made a statement that I just want to be clear on. If there is a material departure from the zoning ordinance on those plans, that would be something that you would have to look at. Is that correct?
No.
I mean, these are plans that have been approved. To Ben's understanding, they have been approved.
And they.
Or building.
And they should be consistent with the zoning ordinance?
But, I mean, these are, when he's granting, when he's issuing the occupancy permit, he's looking at the plans that had been approved by the town.
Yes.
And, I mean, it's not at that point where he goes and reconfirms that everything in the plans that were approved should have been approved the first time.
There is a presumption that the process worked out.
Right.
And that the previous code enforcement officer looked at the zoning ordinance, approved it accordingly, and gets passed on.
Correct.
So my query is that if the material breach or material departure is something that's so obvious, then the query is whether the original approval will subject, that should not have been approved. So that's why I raised that query, is that I don't think it's a blanket, you, we just accept a previous approved application. I think there's some independent thought that has to go into it as well. We're not just.
Well, you're stating, I mean, is that a question for Ben?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that point, that you receive the file, if there's a material breach or.
If there's a, I guess, when you're looking at the plans that are, that have been approved and for the granting of an occupancy permit, do you at least consider whether or not these plans are generally in conformance with the ordinance?
No, I don't.
No.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it would be proper to, I mean, if you approve someone's proposed plans and say, "Yes, go build this," I'm not sure after the fact you could say, "Well, never mind, we've changed our interpretation, and we're looking at it in a different view."
In fact, you can't build that. No, my point is that I think there should be due deference to the previous person. I'm not advocating that we shouldn't reinvent the wheel, but I am suggesting that there's probably a good reason that we should re-use the paperwork to make sure it's consistent with our understanding of the zoning ordinance. Whether this issue is material, I don't believe I'm that troubled by it. I'm troubled that, I just want to understand the process by which a previous application was approved, time has moved on, more people, you know, there's a change in position, and I want to avoid an issue that, some uncertainty and ambiguity, and I wanted to make sure that we're reflecting properly as to the process by which we actually do our jobs, including the code enforcement officer, so that when we're looking at a file, we're not just rubber-stamping the file. That's the point. To what extent, you know, you go through it and actually redo the effort, I'm not going to suggest reinventing the wheel again.
But this discussion seems somewhat theoretical, at least.
Let me, because I've had a question on here all day that I've been waiting to ask, and again, as the second non-lawyer on the board, as we all painfully know. The question I have is, and this is what's before the ZB Act, and I think Attorney Gateway articulated it earlier, are we focused on whether, just the compliance of what was approved, are we just looking at what was approved, what CO that was issued is consistent with the plans? Okay? Or are we also looking to see whether this is in compliance with the zoning ordinances?
I mean, my view right now is that it's the former. It's whether or not the occupancy permit that was issued was in conformance with the permit that was issued, the building permit that was issued. Now, I understand there's a question, or there have been arguments raised, that the permit, it's unclear what the permit allowed. But I think, I mean, the issue before the board is, did the occupancy, did the occupancy permit conform with the building permit? I mean, you know, my inclination at this point is, you know, having heard what Ben discussed was his process and what he found in the town office, is that based on the plans that were in the town office and based on his inspection of the property and of the work, that it is. Now, that's not making a general statement as to whether or not the initial permit should have been issued, because that has not yet been before the board. It wasn't before the board in 2012 because the board found that the appeal was untimely, and that is now what is being appealed to the Superior Court. And that is now what is being appealed to the Superior Court. And there's still fact finding going on at that level, which if that ends up being remanded, there will be additional facts that will be before the board that would presumably assist the board in ruling on whether or not the permit should have initially been issued. But at this point, my inclination is, we're looking at the permit that was issued, the building permit that was issued, and was the work done in compliance with that permit? And hearing Ben's explanation for how he, you know, went into the office and found the plans that he believed is what the permit was issued on, that the occupancy permit was properly issued based on that.
And Ben, I know I asked earlier whether the CO issued was consistent with the plans, was it consistent with the permit as well?
Well, the permit says per plans.
Okay. That's easy. Yeah, I would also agree that, I mean, at the end of the day, I think what is before us is whether the CO that was issued is consistent with the plans on the permit. And it seems, you know, based upon the materials and just listening to, you know, people's arguments tonight and Ben's process, that is, that seems, that's the case as far as I'm concerned.
I agree, and it may strike some of us as unfair, but I think state law actually constrains us to that issue where it appears that the construction conformed with the plans and therefore the application met all the building codes. I think we have no choice but to proceed and basically confirm the issuance of the occupancy.
Yeah, I agree with that summary as well.
Anybody like to?
I agree.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Do I just get to say so moved?
No, you have to make a motion, Mike. You're an attorney.
I guess I would simply move to affirm the issuance of the occupancy permit as issued by the town code enforcement officer. And I would welcome any friendly amendments to that motion if they're necessary.
Well, I guess since it's an appeal of the issuance, should the motion be to deny the appeal? So motion to deny...
I'll make a motion to deny the administrative appeal on the temporary certificate of occupancy issued November 15, 2013, permit number 109994. Did I get all the particulars right?
Can you say that again, Slade? To deny, to deny the administrative appeal of the temporary certificate of occupancy issued on...
On November 15, 2013, permit number 109994.
Okay, so there's now a motion to deny the administrative appeal of the temporary certificate of occupancy issued on November 15, 2013, permit number 109994. Do you have a second?
One second.
All in favor? All right. So that motion passes five, nothing, to deny the administrative appeal.
I want to thank you for taking the time. The purposes of the records, are we able to just identify that the plan that Mr. Dugald spoke about that shows this intruding into further than nine feet, the overhang further than nine feet, was the September 24, 2012?
Object to the assertion implicit in that point.
The plan that talked about the overhang, it said September 24, 2012.
Doesn't the plan speak for itself?
Yeah.
It's just because a lot of the preferred purposes of the plan, I'm just trying to say this in terms of...
Sure.
Well, but the indication here is that the code enforcement officer said there was a corroboration of the setback phase of September, the plans do not need to be postponed. So the plan being referring, we discussed this issue, but I'm not implying that there was a legal setback.
I think the record speaks for itself, the exception of, we just identified the date of the plan, it says September 24, 2012.
The date of what plan?
The plan that references the overhang.
Let me put it a different... Should we have an additional finding of facts that simply cites the plans that the CEO is relying upon for purposes of issuing the partial CO?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Pretty good for a non-lawyer, huh? Excellent. All right, I'm going to now read the findings of fact and then we'll add to them as necessary. Number one, this is an administrative appeal of the code enforcement officer's decision to issue a temporary certificate of occupancy for a building project at 40 Surf Road, MAP U5, Lot 42. Two, the appellant's are Harold and Mary Friedman, who reside at 36 Surf Road, which abuts the subject property. Three, on June 6, 2012, a building permit application for 40 Surf Road was received to add an addition on the second floor above a pre-existing roof and for a new mudroom. Four, the application was assigned permit number 120434. Five, a permit was granted on June 8, 2012, with the permit number 120434 assigned, with a building permit placard having the number 109994. Six, on November 5, 2012, an administrative appeal was filed on behalf of Harold and Mary Friedman, questioning the authority of the code enforcement officer to issue the June 8, 2012 permit. Seven, on November 27, 2012, the zoning board of appeals denied the administrative appeal as a result of it being untimely. The Freedmans have appealed this decision to the Superior Court, and the matter is still pending a final decision. Eight, on November 15, 2013, the code enforcement officer issued a partial temporary certificate of occupancy so that the homeowner can transition the use of two bedrooms into the newly constructed space in order to continue the construction project into previously occupied space. And let's add the new finding of fact after that.
Yeah. I'm going to give it a shot. Go ahead.
Good luck. The CEO relied on the plans dated January 20, 2012, as revised on September 24, 2012, for purposes of issuing the certificate of partial occupancy.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
There are, the complete plan set is the January plan set. So I didn't fully rely on the September plan set for the certificate of occupancy. I relied on both plan sets technically.
So you want an add?
The September plan set are a few sheets of the total package that were amended to rectify the encroachment.
So, I mean, wasn't, wasn't it that, I mean, I think I said, the plans dated January 20, 2012, as revised by the September 24, 2012?
Okay.
You want amended? You want added?
Revised, amended?
As long as that says I'll use both plan sets.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's what I heard.
Okay. All right, so we'll keep that. On December 13, 2013, Harold and Mary Friedman submitted an application for administrative appeal to appeal the code enforcement officer's decision to issue a partial temporary certificate of occupancy. All in favor of the findings of fact? All right, five, nothing. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to hear the request of Austin Chad of 191 Fowler Road, MAP U44-28, to appeal the code enforcement officer's denial of a building permit to construct an agricultural building that is intended to be used as part of the applicant's existing produce business, which is located at a different site. And before we hear from the applicant, Ben, if you could just give us some general background?
Sure. I'd like to start by saying, I truly want Austin and Mary Ellen Chad's produce business to thrive in Cape Elizabeth. I want you guys to be successful farmers here. I truly mean that. The Chads want to grow vegetables on their property to supply their produce business. I told them in November that the use is allowed, but it requires site plan approval from the planning board. They disagree with this interpretation. In the rebuttal to my building permit denial, the Chads make some well-founded points regarding the application. It would be nice if the ordinance was clearer on this subject. Ultimately, this decision has far-reaching implications for Cape Elizabeth, and I feel the town is better served to have the zoning board make the decision. This issue comes down to the definition of non-residential use and how the ordinance intends it to be applied. The ordinance can be read two different ways. The Chads contend that their use is resource-related and therefore does not require site plan review. In my opinion, the ordinance intends new uses that are not residential to obtain site plan approval. In support of my decision, here are three facts. In Section 1981, buffering of non-residential uses, it states that buffers are required on the side and rear yards of non-residential uses except agriculture. So the ordinance is stating a non-residential requirement and then specifically exempting agriculture, which leads me to believe the ordinance looks at agriculture as a non-residential use. Second point, in the site plan review section, 1992B, certain types of agricultural buildings are exempt from site plan review. Why would these exemptions exist if site plan review doesn't apply to agriculture? If my interpretation of this is wrong, it renders that whole section of the ordinance essentially meaningless, because agricultural buildings wouldn't need any exemptions to site plan review. It would mean that someone could conceptually build a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot agricultural building with a simple building permit. And maybe this is the case, that to me does not seem to be the intent of the ordinance. I believe the ordinance intends those agricultural exemptions to apply to existing farms and still expects new non-residential farming operations to obtain a site plan approval. Lastly, in our definition section, it states that all words not defined herein shall carry their customary and usual meanings. Non-residential is not defined in the zoning ordinance, so I would contend that we should use the customary and usual meaning of the word, which to me is anything that is not residential.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, Chad.
Good evening, my name is Austin Chad, and today with me are John Green and Jay Cox from the Cape Farm Alliance. A summary of my position is as follows. First, the current use of the lot located at 191 Fowler Road is that of a single-family dwelling, which is a permitted residential use under Section 19-6-1B2A on page 56. An allowable accessory use to a residential use is that of an accessory building listed under Section 1961B4A on page 56. The definition of an accessory building found on page two includes an agricultural building. Further, the construction of a single-family dwelling or accessory building does not require site plan review, as stated in Section 1992B1 on page 224. More specifically, a greenhouse under 2,000 square feet does not require site plan review under Section 19-92B3C. Secondly, the proposed use of the accessory building is to perform agriculture, which includes growing, harvesting, and selling of crops, as the definition states on page two. It permitted resource-related use found in Section 19-6-1B1B on page 56, and therefore not listed as a non-residential use. Additionally, the zoning ordinance specifically states that non-residential uses of property require site plan review in Section 19-92A2 on page 224. The zoning board of appeals has ruled that resource-related uses of property do not require site plan review, as determined in their minutes from July 26, 2011, page two, line one through two. And finally, within the denial letter for the building permit number 140031, code enforcement officer classifies the proposed use as a non-residential agricultural use. So that's classification does not exist within the zoning ordinance. The only agricultural use can be found under resource-related use. Mis-categorizing the proposed use of the property and requiring site plan review as a non-residential use is incorrect, as use is a resource-related use which does not require site plan review, according to the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chad. Yes, yes, we have that, I believe. We have the memorandum that was submitted in support of the building permit, which is, thank you for submitting that, it's actually very helpful and detailed. I guess before we have questions for Mr. Chad, well, actually, why don't we have questions for him first before we do any public comment? Any questions from the board for Mr. Chad?
Sorry, Chair, were we planning to come back to Mr. Chad after public comment?
No, I was actually, let's ask questions for him now and then we can come back if we have more questions for him. But while he's, Mr. Chad, if you want to return to the podium.
And because John Green helped to write a lot of the ordinance, as in respects to agriculture in Cape Elizabeth, I'm using him as support because he knows it inside out.
Great, great. Let's first ask, if the board has questions directly for you.
Sure.
And then when we get to the public comment section, then we can hear from him and anybody.
Okay.
Matt?
I was going to let, you want me to start?
Sure.
Good evening. Is the structure that you plan to build, is that going to be permanent and such that 12 months out of the year we'll be there?
So a greenhouse is a non-permanent structure, doesn't have a foundation, is that what you're getting at?
Sorry, when you, thank you for clarifying. When you wish to put up the greenhouse?
Sure.
How many months out of the year will it be physically standing?
Oh, sure. It's, I operate it year-round, so I grow in the winter, in the fall, in the spring, in the summer.
And part of the application, you were mentioning that you were going to sub... And part of the application, you were mentioning that you're gonna sell crops, not at the facility, not from your property?
Correct.
So, how are you going to get the crops from the greenhouse to where you would sell them?
So, at my farm, we use wheelbarrows, we use...
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Once you have a bushel of carrots, do you put them in a car or a truck or some sort of vehicle, and then what happens?
I use a small electric golf cart, and, you know, we have a washing station that's maybe twenty feet from our greenhouses, so it's a very short distance.
Thank you for clarifying, Ken. What I mean is that when you actually put them in, do you actually drop on the road, and where do you go once you leave your property with the produce?
If I were to collect produce from the greenhouses?
Yeah.
My farm is about forty seconds down the road, and I have walk-in coolers there. I also have a farm stand at the farm, so that is where the produce would...
You don't anticipate suppliers, vendors coming to your property, is that correct?
Absolutely not. That is correct.
I may have some follow-up, but why don't we pass along to you guys? Anybody else?
Mr. Chad, you're, you live at one ninety-one Fowler Road?
Correct.
Okay, and just trying to get the picture of it. Where is the, where is the farm?
Greenspark Farm is located on three sixteen Fowler Road. This will be our sixth year in that location. Fifth year, I'm sorry.
So, you currently own and live in the residence that's on the problem?
Can you repeat that question?
Sure. Do you own and live in the residence that's on the problem?
We bought the house in December twentieth of two thousand and thirteen, so yes.
Any other questions for now, for Mr. Chad?
I will have a, I'll state the obvious. Mr. Chad, what was the reason why you did not seek a site plan review? Is it just your position that it didn't apply?
That is correct.
And do you have a thinking as to why you, this is not a home business or home occupation?
It's agriculture, doesn't, it's a different, agriculture is a separate category from a home business or a enterprise. I don't believe it can be categorized as a home business.
I have no more questions.
Okay, unless there are any other questions for Mr. Chad, I guess we'll open it up for public comment at this point. We might come back to you, Mr. Chad, but you wanted to...
Good evening. My name is Jim Rowe, and I live at one-twenty-seven Oakhurst Road. In retrospect, I'm gonna ramble a little bit, but I'll be done in two minutes, I promise. In retrospect, the contribution of which I am most proud during my tenure on the town council here in Cape Elizabeth, was sponsoring the Cape Farm Alliance into existence. One of the main factors, if not the driving factor, in the formation of the Cape Farm Alliance in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, was the scheduled review and updating of the town's comprehensive plan, which would take place over the following three years. It was important that the farming community be represented at the discussion table, and more important, that they be on the same page and that they be advocating for the same issues. Since its inception, the alliance has helped to bring farms in our town together. It's helped educate the community with regard to the importance of our local farms, and for our purposes tonight, it has helped town leaders to recognize and work with our farmers as a group, in order to preserve and enhance agriculture within the borders of Cape Elizabeth. In my opinion, our town must take every opportunity it can to preserve and ideally promote our agriculture in this town. Four reasons for that. Farms create jobs. Number two, farms retain open space, which has been identified quantitatively as an important desire of most of our citizens. Three, our town has since its founding been a community of agriculture and fishing, and we must never, ever allow that heritage to die. And number four, this reason dwarfs all the others. We must sustain local sources of fresh, healthy food, food that has not been dosed with preservatives, coloring agents, and chemicals that are increasingly being linked to problems like obesity, chemical imbalances, cancers, and other serious diseases. As you on the zoning Board of Appeals well know, ordinances are on paper are one thing, but interpretations of those ordinances may vary from person to person. That's your job to sort that out. This item before you tonight is a matter of practicality. I'd urge you to use reason in your interpretation of the applicable ordinances, and to rule in favor of the applicants here. Not only is their application on what I believe to be very solid ground in ordinance that was developed cooperatively by the Cape Farm Alliance and the town, but it makes sense. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
Good evening. My name's John Green, a member of the Cape Farm Alliance, and also a member of the committee that helped draft ordinances in relation to agriculture, in working with the town, as several other members here have. I wanted to just get into a little bit of the ordinance language and sort of clarify some things. The intent was to make agriculture viable in town, and also not restrict it. So, we work with the town to make the zoning less restrictive for agriculture, to help promote it all the way down to microfarms on small lots. And in that case, agriculture was allowed all the way through to the RC zone, the smallest lots in town. But I'm gonna focus on the RA quickly here, and the agriculture is a resource-related use. And then we also have non-residential uses listed as a separate category. If you go further into the RA, there is section F, site plan review, and agriculture is not listed in that section specifically. So, if we turn to site plan review, Article nine, and we look, I believe the sticking point would be under applicability, under nineteen-nine-two, number two. Any non-residential expansion or change of use, et cetera, and I think there's a problematic bit of language in that that refers to non-residential, not agriculture, and the word non-residential should follow through to change of use. They're specifically referring to item three under the RA zone. So, that precludes agriculture. And the, if you turn the page, under activities not requiring, this implies that agriculture, other than certain-sized buildings, farm markets, et cetera, are allowed. And the reason for that, now we go back all the way to the definitions, and I'll be done in a minute, under accessory buildings or structures, the bottom of that definition, for residential uses, accessory buildings and structures shall include, but not be limited to, garage, gazebo, greenhouse, home workshop, recreational facilities, agriculture or aquaculture buildings. This implies that agriculture is compatible with residential areas, because it's an accessory use. And agriculture, under its own definition, implies the selling of the products. And this is not gonna be the case in this situation, but in the case of microfarms selling honey, for example, herbs, et cetera, let's say in the RC zone, that would be allowed, as long as you did not have a full-blown farm market, but perhaps a temporary structure for a certain time of the year. So, we wrote these ordinances to be as liberal as possible with agriculture in town, and I think by reading it carefully, I think all of this supports the Chad's premise that they can have a hoop house in their backyard. Thank you.
Mr. Green, I guess I have a question for you.
Yes.
Could you go back again, and I didn't quite catch what you said around nineteen-nine-two, and the non-residential expansion or change in use?
Yes, I was pointing out that that item is a sticking point in the sense of someone could read that and misinterpret it. As was said earlier, the zoning ordinance is not perfect, and every time I read it, I place notes in it, because there are places such as that, where a misinterpretation can occur. And, you know, and all due respect to Ben, being new in town, there was a lot of effort that went into this whole process of rewriting the ordinance, and obviously, it's especially someone of, you know, professional like Ben, it's easy to find things in here that aren't quite right, and hence, the need to explain things such as that, where someone could misinterpret that.
So, it's, from your perspective, it's a drafting issue?
Correct. It is, the non-residential should have been also put before change of use, because that's specifically referring to item three in the RA zone, those specific non-residential items, and not agriculture, as a resource-related use. Thank you.
William Bamford, one-twelve Sperwick Avenue.
What's your last name again, sir?
Bamford, B-A-M-F-O-R-D. Good evening. My wife Lois and I own Maxwell's Farm. My wife Lois was unable to be here tonight. She is a sixth generation of the Maxwell family to be farming in Cape Elizabeth. When South Portland and Cape Elizabeth separated in eighteen ninety-five, several generations of the Maxwell and Jordan families had already been cultivating what is now Cape farmland. In the early twentieth century, Cape farms were a major source of produce for Portland. Also, a large portion of our product went to the Boston market during this time. In the nineteen-thirties, there were forty to fifty farms in town. In the forties, there were about thirty-five, and by nineteen-fifty, it was down to twenty. Suburbia was beginning to encroach on Cape Elizabeth. It was also during the fifties that iceberg lettuce became a major crop of Cape farmers. In the nineteen-sixties, there were only about ten farms in town, and we hit an all-time low in the seventies at six farms. Taxes, the increased costs of inputs and machinery, and national agri businesses, as well as the pressure of development, were beginning to take their toll. It was during this time that the residents had a growing realization that valuable farmland was disappearing. The importance of saving farmland, and the farmers who care for it, became increasingly important to Cape residents. In the latest comprehensive plan update, saving farmland became the highest priority in the town. People worked together to address some of the challenges that modern farms and farmers face. As a result, today, there are sixteen farms in town, both conventional and organic. The majority grow strawberries and vegetables, but there are also growers of herbs, blueberries, Christmas trees, as well as meat, which includes beef, pigs, and lamb. Outlets include seven onsite markets or stands, as well as CSAs, out-of-town farm markets, and wholesale markets. For a hundred and fifty to two hundred years, residential homes and Cape farmers have lived side by side. As farmers, we realize that our neighbors, many of whom are our customers, enjoy different lifestyles and schedules than we do. We do our best to respect that, and feel that conversely, our neighbors respect our choice of business and lifestyle. Agriculture never has been, nor was it intended to be, separated from our residences. It's an important part of the fabric of our community, that when woven together, makes Cape Elizabeth one of the most desired towns in our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bamford.
Sorry, Chair, I have a question of the witness.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Bamford.
Yes?
We know each other. We met at the Farm Alliance, I think, at dinner a couple weeks ago. Hopefully, there's no issue here. But how long have you been living in this town?
Personally, myself, I'm the newer guy in town. I've only been here about thirty years.
And so, was one ninety-one Fowler Road part of a farm at one time?
I could not answer that personally. I have no...
Sorry, sorry. When you come up, please, let me make that statement for you. Okay, thank you.
My name is Kelly Gordon, and I live at one-ten Two Lights Road. And I just wanted to kind of break it down very simply. From what I've been hearing, as a homeowner on one ninety-one Fowler Road, as a homeowner on one ninety-one Fowler Road, it seems to me in very simple that they've met all the criteria to build a simple greenhouse hoop house under two thousand square feet. And they've met all the criteria, they've met the ordinance that is, they're following all the guidelines, and I think it should pass. I think every resident has the right to do this. It's, the Chad's have another business, but they've already said that traffic, there won't be an increase of traffic, they're not selling out of that. So, if I wanted to put a hoop house on my property, I wouldn't be here. It would be a non-issue, and I think every citizen has a right to do that, as the guidelines stand. So, that's it.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hi there. I'm Penny Jordan. I'm one of the owners of Jordan's Farm here in Cape Elizabeth, at twenty-one Wells Road. I stand here today as a fourth-generation farmer, and I stand in this room knowing that my father sat in this room many times, thinking about how we merge and how we blend our community, so that we could embrace the evolution that was happening, at the same time, we could sustain and ensure the viability of our farms. In two thousand and eight, the Cape Farm Alliance presented a report to the town council on the current state and the future state of farming in Cape Elizabeth. The next step after that was to work diligently with the planning board on ordinances to ensure Cape Elizabeth's farming future. These are very, very key words, as the Cape Farm Alliance works, to ensure that we will have viable and successful farms in our town. The definition of agriculture was crafted in a way that would help ensure Cape's farming future. And as the key elements of this definition speak, the purpose of agriculture is to ensure the diversity of agriculture. It's the primary purpose is raising and selling crops. Agriculture and farming in Cape Elizabeth has been a commercial operation for generations. We wanted to continue to build on this. In our work, we recognized housing developments grew out of the fields of the once-working farms, and that had been owned by families for generations. We sought to continue the vision of our parents and ensure that farming would be able to coexist, and ideally flourish, in a town that people across this state are in awe, that Cape Elizabeth, of all communities, has experienced growth in agriculture over the last five years. When I think about the town as a child, and that was a really long time ago, and what was going on, and achieving coexistence, I believe that the community leaders were masterful, creating a vision that recognized the value of farms through the food they produce, the vistas they maintain, and the job experiences they create for the young people in the community, while embracing at the same time the transformation of the town we were experiencing. Agriculture is a vital part of our community. It is the work of several families in this town, and I mean work, as in career and vocation. Working together, we can minimize the barriers and ensure that farming continues to grow and flourish for generations to come. The dynamic tension between houses and fields has been happening for over fifty years. We're now at a point where young people are choosing farming as a career. Cape Elizabeth needs to continue the vision of past generations and continue to embrace working farms as a key part of what makes Cape Elizabeth... working farms as a key part of what makes Cape Elizabeth a unique and vibrant community. And I thank you very much for listening this evening and for being part of the zoning board.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Were there any questions? No. Okay.
My name is Nick Tamero, and I own Down Home Farm at Two Harvest Lane, as well as Tamero Landscaping. I was in the CHADS' same position in 2009. I developed a paper street and I had to go through site plan review. That was just to get onto the property to be able to build a house and a barn. I learned very quickly that it was an extremely expensive endeavor. I was very young, you know, it was, it cost me $9,000 to go through site plan review. And I don't take, I'm in the process of going through site plan review now, again, for my current business, and it proves to be unaffordable for a farmer starting out. $8,000, $9,000, $10,000 is the difference between a walk behind rototiller or a ride on tractor with a rototiller. My biggest thing is that I think farming is extremely important, and there's not many young people getting into it. And if it becomes so difficult to even get the town to say it's okay to do it, as, you know, sure thing is putting a hoop house on a property where you live, it could be, I don't think young people are going to continue to do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Salvi-Bothel, 90 Ocean House Road. I'm also Fox Run Farm and Bothell's Mechanical Repair. And I've got in front of me here notes from the minutes of the July 26, 2011 zoning board meeting that I was at. I got this hit from the chair, the CHADS are sitting in now, and ended up having to come here with a lawyer because we didn't know the right words. We were trying to grow blueberries. Excuse me, I'm menopausal. We were trying to grow blueberries on land that my husband's family had owned for 125 years, and in the process of trying to get that done, found out that we had buildable land that we could put 14 condominiums on. And for a minute, I had dollar signs dancing in my head, "In Cape Elizabeth, 14 properties, I mean, this is worth so much." We didn't want to do that. My husband has never lived more than 200 feet from where he lives today. His mom is still on the property. We ended up spending $35,000 to grow blueberries. I think I might have had an easier shot at a nuclear power plant. We now have 300 high bush blueberries. But this is a farming community. Why I needed to go that far and hire the number of professionals, it wasn't just a lawyer, there were different kinds of surveyors and wetlands planners and mappers, and it's really not that complicated. And what these kids want to do is something that this whole town should be cheering. We all ought to be out there helping them put it up, not questioning motives of, "Are you going to try and make money out of this?" I don't think that that really comes into question at all. From my notes, I have a couple of things, and again, let me just tell you, this is July 26, 2011, so you can look them up if you want. On Page Two, Line Nine, " Agriculture is neither residential nor non-residential. Site plan review is not required for resource-related uses." On that same paper, Line Twenty-Two, "Section 19-6-1 lists what is permitted in Residential A District. Agriculture is listed in Subparagraph B. In Section 19-9-2, Page 219, Site Plan Review is not required for agricultural use." The chairman at that time, I think his name is Gilliano, Gilino, I'm not sure, he replied, he was relying on Section 19-6-1B permitted uses, which states the following are accepted uses: agriculture and under 4-H, agriculture-related use. You've already been here. This whole town has already been here. Let's just do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Were there any questions? All right.
I'm Stephen Bothell at 90 Ocean House Road. Some of this is going to be a little bit of a repeat because we didn't share notes. I did a little research on this. It says, "In the state of Maine, farmers 34 years old and younger, it has grown by 40% a period of time between 2000 and 2012." As far as the whole United States goes, it's only grown 1.5%. In the state of Maine, there's been an 8% increase in the land use for farming in the, between 2000 and 2000, 2007 and 2012. When I looked it up, I come across 20 farms listed for Cape Elizabeth alone at this time right now. We really need to help, not hinder, people who want a farm. Pertaining to our blueberry farm, she went through some of the stuff on it. We ended up hiring a landscape architect, a wetland specialist, a land surveyor for tops, for topography, land surveyor for boundaries, and a soil scientist, and it was $35,000. If we hadn't have spent that much money, we would have been able to install drip irrigation and 700 more plants. It wouldn't be profitable for small farmers if they all had to shell out that kind of money in order to, I mean, we didn't build anything. This was just to say, "You can plant blueberries." And...
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Ray Chevanel. My wife Diane and I live at 189 Fowler Road. We've been in the Cape since 1968. We bought our land, which borders the CHADS' property, in 1975, and it borders the property, the CHADS' property, on two sides, on the east side and on the north side. A lot has been said already about farming. I'd just like to add, thanks to the leadership and the members of the Cape Farm Alliance, farming in Cape Elizabeth has become a perfect fit for all the families and businesses wanting the many benefits of fresh food, locally grown, fresh food. Our farming culture in the Cape and our farming sights and sounds are abundant here. The barns, the tractors, the pickup trucks, the greenhouses, the tilled fields in the spring, the strawberry plants each June, and the fall harvest. On Fowler Road alone, there are many barns and greenhouses. Directly across Fowler Road from Austin and Mary Ellen Chad's new home is a two-story barn. And in the backyard of the property, right next to their backyard on the west side, is a freestanding two-story garage. Cape, for a long time, has had a town policy to protect and preserve our rural character. The farms and our hard-working farmers and their families represent a very significant part of our rural character. Diane and I support Austin and Mary Ellen Chad's plans for their backyard, and we ask this board to allow them to move forward with their plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
My name is Byron Castro. I live at 185 Fowler Road. And first and foremost, I want to say that I do support, even though people may not think by the end of this conversation, I do support the farmlands. My biggest concern with this being done is wetlands. We bought this house at 185 Fowler Road after looking at six houses prior. We actually looked at their house at one time and found that it had water issues in the backyard. It's very close to RP Wetlands. It also, after we started to buy the house at 185, we found out that we were shoreline restricted, where Great Pond restricted, and RP One restricted. So I had to go out myself and get a site plan done, just to see about a 30-by-30 garage in the backyard. My biggest concern is where the drainage is going. Their house, the four houses next beside theirs are the lowest houses in the area, and their water either goes towards, sometimes goes to Great Pond, but most of the time it'll go back. And if I may put this up, oh, this is a small section of this area is... This is, whoops, oh, sorry. This is the RP One Wetlands that we have behind our houses right here and right here behind their houses is RP One Wetlands. It's small enough, so it shouldn't have had where they're putting their greenhouse, but we're worried about runoff because the closest water goes is towards the back. This is the lowest area in the area, other than the four house lots here. The water between, behind their house goes between, I have to, I'm going to say, I think there's this 191, 193, splits a little bit of water into two houses, splits really bad behind the next house. Actually, right here, you can see a couple of seagulls taking a bath in their house. So it really has water drainage issues. I'm worried that when the farm does go there or any type of surface, we need to think about where the water's draining. I'm worried about water coming back behind yards and creating more water, creating more water, or it might even create more waters. I know, we looked at another house on those four lots and found out that the Cape Elizabeth Fire Department had to pump out three feet of water because we were out of power for over three days and the pump wasn't running. So Cape Fire Department drained water out of their house. So it's a real drainage issue. You can really see it if you drive down Fowler Road, those four lots only. As you get up towards my house, we're about six to eight feet above the street level, but the backyard's all two-sloped, really, really low to behind Bob Mallie's house, and all the way towards, towards the other end of Fowler Road, towards this area. This also goes down towards the Sperling River. You have to worry about that. And again, we're in a weird zone where we qualify, this is shorefront. I'll never know how because we've got a road that goes through here, and it shouldn't even be qualified as shorefront property, but it does, that's for sure. And if you use the other half, which is another thing that the town has created for us, we have the Great Pond, which, as you can see, takes up the whole section of Fowler Road almost as the Great Pond. So there's another zone that you have to worry about, as well as the RP One Wetlands. So, only reason I know this is because the town planner, when we got to buy our house, the person who lived there before there moved out because he couldn't build in front of his house because of shorefront. So I found out about that, came to the town planner, the town planner told me, "You better get a site review or get a survey done because it's wet," before we closed down our house. This is how I found out about all this water issue. And that's my biggest concern. I hope very much for the best for the farmer. My only concern is what's going to happen to us. You know, if this is wet, tractors coming out of it, we've got shoreline front area that's the front part of the property, shorefront. Actually, I think their house is actually in the shorefront, so I think that becomes another whole different issue. That's my biggest concern, is where is all this water going to go? And again, if it's a small area, I think it might be able to be, something might be able to be done, but I think that's got to be concerned. I'm not against it. I'm worried about the water and the water backing up over our house, and it's going to go, if it's got fertilizer, you've got to worry about fertilizer, anything like that. But those are some of the things that I think needs to be addressed. It's not against the farmer, but what are we going to do with the water runoff is the biggest concern, I think, is what we've got to address. Can you address that, I think, I think they're all free, to be honest with you. But I think this has to be part of the, part of the application of where the water's going.
Any questions?
Whoops, sorry.
I just wanted to comment that I did review the Resource Protection Standards and the Great Pond Watershed Overlay Standards, and I believe the proposal complies with both of those standards. I didn't do any sort of stormwater review, but I did review for Resource Protection and Great Pond Watershed Overlay.
Thank you, Ben. Further public comment?
My name is David Buchanan, and I'm with the Cape Farm Alliance, and I'm reading a letter for Janet Filiot, a Cape resident from Seven Montgomery Terrace, dated yesterday, 24th of March, and said, "To the members of the Cape Elizabeth zoning board of appeals, I'm writing in support of Mary Ellen and Austin Chad's application to construct a hoop house on their Fowler Road property. I regret that family commitments prevent me from attending the hearing and voicing my thoughts personally. As you're all aware, Cape Elizabeth has a long and rich agricultural history, which is carried into the present day. Many of our local farms have been in the same families for hundreds of years. It's a part of what makes our town unique. The fact that Cape Elizabeth is considered desirable by a young couple to begin their farm venture speaks volumes about our community's shared values. Mary Ellen and Austin have demonstrated a commitment to sustainable, organic farming practices. Through their raising of heirloom plants, they're preserving horticultural history. They've been an active presence in Cape, supportive of Judy's Food Pantry and part of the Cape Farm Alliance, as well as the larger agricultural community in our region. Chad's commitment to excellence in farming and to treading lightly on our planet has won them a loyal following, myself among them, and a measure of success in a business that can be incredibly difficult. In order to allow their efforts to expand, a hoop house is a natural step forward. I cannot fathom why such a low-impact structure would be at issue as they seek the appropriate permits for its construction. It's within the permitted uses for the land the CHADS occupy. I urge you all to consider approving this permit, thus allowing Cape's farming tradition to take another step forward." And she gives her contact information, I'll pass this on to you. "Sincerely, Janet Filiot." And on a personal note, I want to say that I've been leasing land, as a grower here in Cape, for the past seven years along Old Ocean House Road. And I can tell you what a challenge it is to find places to grow, and I also have a stand at the Portland Farmers Market, as the CHADS do. And so I've watched their business grow, and I know how much support they have in the community and what a fantastic job they do, and how much of an asset they are to Cape Elizabeth, and I hope the town can tonight return the favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, sorry, come in. Thank you.
Further public comment?
As you may have guessed, I'm not a farmer, and I apologize for that. But I have, I have a full set of sprouts up in the third-floor window, and we're excited for spring if it would get here. My name is Nate Hucklebauer. I'm an attorney out of that cesspool city to the north Portland, and I'm representing today Brian and Wendy Tate, who live at 193 Fowler Road, immediately adjacent to the CHADS' property. And I'm here, Brian and Wendy could not attend tonight, I'm here, we're here in support of the decision of the code officer. Right now, we're not arguing that this use is not permitted, just arguing that a change of use like this should go through site plan review. Now, one of the concerns that was raised is that site plan review is very expensive. Site plan review, I believe, some of the, some of the requirements can be waived. If they look and say, "You know what, that's not a real big concern right here, we can waive one of those requirements." But the issue here has already been presented, one of the impact on the neighbors, where's the water going to go? Where, right now, this is, it's a residential house, my clients have, it's their backyard, they've got a pool back- My clients have, it's their backyard, they've got a pool back there, it's been a private place, and now this is a, it is a different use. It is a, whether it's residential or non-residential, if it's not a house, it's not residential. So this is a different type of use. And whether it's an electric golf cart, or a truck, or a tractor, there's going to be a lot more activity back there. And there's, the whole point of site plan review is to say, how is this different use going to impact the neighbors? And what can we do to minimize that? Why should someone move into the neighborhood and say, "I'm going to impose my will on you, and I'm not going to be a considerate neighbor. I'm not going to minimize my impact on you, I'm just going to do exactly what I want." The site plan process says, "Look at what's around you. How can you minimize your impact on existing uses?" The backyard is practically open for these four lots, four houses here. These are small lots, they're not, they're not the two-acre, or nearly two-acre minimum lots size for this zone. They're closer to one and a half lots, one and a half acres, and everyone's right on top of each other, basically. This, the proposed structure is only about 90 feet from the lot line, and it's really quite close. All of this activity is going to be going on in a place that previously has been a very, has been strictly residential, a very quiet, private place. And so, you know, my client's primary concern is that this change of use is going to have an impact on these neighbors, on other neighbors. And at a minimum, this should go through a process to minimize those impacts and try to address the neighborhood concerns about a use that's very important to Cape Elizabeth. But the fact is that there is a house next door, the house is allowed to be there, and this is a new use that's going to impose some externalities, some noise, some drainage issues, and some visual chains. Now, again, right now, I'm not saying that you can't do this, but the point is that you have to interpret the ordinance, and it says that a non-residential change of use requires site plan review. And as the code officer said, if all agricultural uses did not need site plan review, why is there a section that exempts certain agricultural uses? So you really have to focus on, one of the tenets of interpreting an ordinance is to interpret it in a way that would not make other parts of the ordinance completely void, and also to not make the ordinance absurd in some way. To say that, "Well, we're going to do this type of activity, and it might involve a tractor, and we're going to build a structure." And just because we say that it's agriculture instead of some other business activity, we don't need to go through site plan review, even though we may have the same impact. One of the, you know, the Chad's house, and their driveway, and some of the other structures there are all within the shoreline setback, or the shoreline overlay. And the shoreline overlay part of the ordinance talks about what you can do within the portion of your lot that is within the shoreline overlay. And right now, it says you cannot have more than 20% of that portion of your lot have an impervious surface. Now, they've already exceeded that. They didn't do that, that's pre-existing, but you can't add anything to that. So, you know, we don't know, and they, tonight, they've said, "We will get out there with a wheelbarrow and a golf cart," but it doesn't seem realistic to think that at some point they'll be stuck in the mud and they'll have to pave it or put down gravel to get to that backyard. And that's going to be going through a damp area, it's going to be increasing impervious surface in the shoreline zone. And I think, again, that's part of, that's what site plan is for, to look at what's going on here, and let's make sure that it's minimizing the impact on the other neighbors, on the existing uses, on the established uses. I do have a little letter I'd just like to submit. It closely mirrors the CEO's comments, and it's mostly just for purposes of the record. If anyone would like a copy, I have several copies. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, or at least try to. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
I'm Louise Sullivan, I live at 72 Two Lights Road. It says Journey Zen Farm on my barn. I live in the middle of a neighborhood and reiship. I've taken time out from the lambing barn here for a moment. Bill Bamford spoke about how farmers have different time. And as I was listening to the comments tonight, and appreciating what Nick Camero said about the cost of your site plan, and what Bob Ellis said about the cost of preparing for theirs, there's another cost to site plan review, and it's the cost of time. This, you know, time is always on the farmer's mind, and time is on the Chad's mind right now. So, you know, to make this a long process, and to put stones in the way of what, you know, we call ourselves a proud Cape Elizabeth, a proud fishing and farming community that's where we all live, is just something we really need to think about in doing this process. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Good evening. My name's Tony Owens. I live on Seaview Avenue where my wife Beth and I have maintained an organic vegetable and fruit garden, apiary and flower garden for over three decades. I'm here to speak in support of the appeal of Austin and Mary Ellen Chad. My arguments in favor of their appeal are based on three issues, which I'll briefly summarize. First, my reading of the regulations regarding the issuance of a building permit strongly favors the Chad's interpretation. Secondly, the town's own comprehensive plan encourages the preservation of agricultural use within the town, and its implementation has been a major initiative of the town itself, as well as the allied organizations, the Cape Elizabeth Land Trust, the Farm Alliance, and the Maine Farmland Trust. Thirdly, during my recent tenure as the president of the Board of Directors of the Natural Resources Council of Maine, a 15,000-member organization advocating for the protection of the nature of Maine, I became acutely aware of the conspicuous absence of younger generations of Mainers committed to a sustainable future for our state. Absent for many reasons, including the lack of a viable economic alternative. With the Chad's application, we have a desirable nexus of farmland protection and retention of the next generation of young, ambitious, hard-working Mainers. For these reasons, I strongly encourage your favorable review of their appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patty Kreitzer, and I grew up at 200 Fowler Road, directly across from the Chad's. I just want to confirm that it is not a new use. As a young girl, I played in those fields. It was owned and operated by Parker Brown, who grew potatoes and carrots for many, many years, until he sold it in the 70s to build 10 houses. There was never a water issue, the fields were always dry. And then, so if you look back maybe at the water levels back in the 70s, there was really not an issue, having a wetland. So I feel like it's not a new use. It's been farmed for many years prior to the 70s, until the houses came in. So thank you.
Chair, I have a question. I have a question for you. Did Parker Brown live on the land?
He did.
And what was the address of that land at that time?
You know what? The house has been torn down and rebuilt. I couldn't tell you off the record.
Would you say to the left or to the right of 191 Fowler Road?
Uh, to the right.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, if you're looking at your house from Great Pond Farm, it would be to the left. If you're at 191, it would be on your right.
My name is Alice Grant. I live at 61 Beach Bluff Terrace, and I'd like to support the Chad's appeal. And I just wanted to focus on the section 19-9-2B that says, "Activities not requiring site plan review include agricultural buildings as follows: any barn, greenhouse, or storage shed with building footprint that does not exceed 2,000 square feet in size." And I don't see anything in here that limits that to whether you're selling the produce or you're not, or, you know, adding it to an existing farm, or really any limitation. So, and agriculture's approved in that zone. So I just think they should be allowed to have a permit without going through the more costly process. Thank you.
My name's Tom Gallagher. I've lived across the street from the Chad's here for 60 years. And the reason why the field is wet is because it was all drained. When the farmers farmed the field, they put clay pipes all the way around the field and drained it down to its spray haul, and it went into Great Pond. And when the town let them build houses in there, they dug up the clay tiles on every house lot there, so there was no place for the water to go. Now the water runs across the street onto my property. I've got three different types of grass on my pasture there where the chemicals come down. There's two six-inch pipes that run under the road. I've addressed the town manager, I addressed the road commissioner on it, nothing's ever been done about it. But the reason why it's wet is because the drain's not there. There was a clay tile all the way around the field, and they tore it up, so there's no place for the water to come. But over my property, it all back. And it was a fine field there for many, many years. Thank you.
I have a question. Did you say you were, that your property across the street?
Yes.
Gets what? You have the three shades of grass?
Three different shades of grass in my pasture, where the animals wouldn't eat because of the stuff coming down from the driveway. As you get up towards 77 this way, the houses are higher. So everything in the driveway comes off their roof, comes off their lawn, comes over my property, whether it's fertilizer, whether it's feed juice, whether it's gasoline, whether it's stope. There's no drainage on the road. So the town should have drained the road or put drains in there, you know, catch basins or whatever when they built the houses, but they never did. So there's no place for the water to go. That's not the Chad's fault, that's not Tate's fault, it's not my fault, it's the town's. So, when I went to school, which was in this building, it wasn't the town hall, it was a school, I'd walk home and work in that field there. Teddy Wainwright found it for many years, he rented it from the Browns, or Vernon Brown found it there. It was always a field, always grew vegetables. Thank you.
I'm Beth Engel. I live off of Fickett on Young Lane. I have a little farm. Sometimes I raise dairy heifers, I've got some horses, chickens. But mostly, I'm a real estate broker. And if I had read, well, I was aware that Cape Farm Alliance, which I belong to, worked on the ordinance. I listened to John quite a bit, read it after it was done. And as a real estate broker, if I'd had a buyer who wanted that piece of property, and they asked me, "Can I put up a hoop house here and grow plants in it?", I'd have told him, "Yeah." So it's a little woolishsome to me that I'm very bright, and I read this ordinance, and I would have said to these people, "Yes, you can, that's agriculture use, you can put up a hoop house and grow plants there." And it worries me that you think I might have been wrong. I hope the Chads can do this. They have a great organic farm, they're an asset to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
My name's Jay Cox. I have a Christmas tree farm on Sawyer Road. And I just wanted to comment on some of the intent. You know, I've heard things like change of use and different ideas about what we had in mind when we drafted these changes to the ordinance. And I just want to point out one example of the fact that we certainly had no intent that there would be any site plan review for beginning new agriculture. I went through site plan review for my barn and farm stand, but it's a commercial building. The ordinance is clear that required site plan review. But from the farm committee's side, and to my knowledge, never from the town, was there ever any intent that there'd be review, a site plan review to commence new agriculture. And I can give you one example of why I feel that, or some evidence of that, I guess. There was a lot of back and forth. We looked at a lot of parts of the ordinance. We looked, we worked hard on the definition of agriculture and all sorts of different things. In one memo that came back to us on 10/2009, and this was drafted by the planner to go to the planning board, a new definition appeared, which was agricultural-related use. And agricultural-related use covered items that would be ancillary to agriculture, like an ice cream stand, or any activity that could support the primary function of farming, to provide more profit. That was proposed to be, that was supposed, proposed to be, this was to give the town some control over these type of activities, to make sure we didn't get too far afield. That was the thinking. This was proposed to be, to go before the zoning board for approval of those types of ancillary activities, not agriculture. Agriculture was a separate definition, and there was never any suggestion or any requirement that agriculture per se require review before commencing. The ancillary activities, yes, they wanted some oversight. However, we went back to them, and I won't bother reading all our response, but basically we said, "We want those combined. We don't want the ancillary activities carved out." Subsequent to that, to our opposing that, the final ordinance did retain a separate definition. However, the review requirement was pulled. There's no review requirement for these ancillary activities or agriculture-related activities. That was pulled. Agriculture remained a permitted use in all zones except the town center, and it remained under resource-related use. Resource-related use includes timber harvesting, topsoil removal, and none of those activities require site plan review. So that's one point. And then, just on greenhouses and smaller structures, I think the attorney that spoke for one of the families on Fowler Road said that, or brought up a point that if it weren't for a review requirement, why would these buildings be carved out as not requiring review? The reason for that is, we went back and forth. Initially, we had proposed that, that no agricultural buildings would require review. And on 10/2009, the town proposed wording that exempted temporary, certain temporary buildings, and they were very specific. They were very small, temporary, there was a time restriction on how long during the year activity could take place there. And in our comments back to the town, saying, "We really don't like that," we said, "We're also concerned that buildings such as greenhouses and sheds that are currently exempt," because under the original ordinance that we worked from, agricultural buildings were exempt. "Greenhouses and sheds that are currently exempt from site plan review appear to now require site plan review under the new draft. We feel that agricultural buildings that are not used for conducting sales, barns, sheds, greenhouses, et cetera, are accessory buildings that should only require a building permit for construction, and requiring such review would create an unreasonable burden. We feel that site plan review should be required for larger and more permanent buildings to be used for sales, as the sales will generate vehicular traffic, pedestrian traffic, and have a greater impact on the immediate area." So we propose that the text be modified to indicate that site plan review is not required for non-sales agricultural buildings, greenhouses, storage sheds, and barns, and that certain sales buildings be exempt if they were used on a temporary basis. And that's how the ordinance ended up. And that's how the ordinance ended up. So my point is, the reason that the section, that section of nineteen-nine references specific agricultural buildings is because, that's to separate them from larger buildings that do in fact require site plan review. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Any questions?
Jay, in two thousand nine, the zoning ordinance, under that section that you were just speaking of, said agricultural activities in buildings were exempt. And so then it was changed to what we have now.
Yep.
Which seems much more restrictive than the two thousand nine language. Because when, you know, when you say, if the zoning ordinance said what it said in two thousand nine, the exemption is agricultural activities and buildings. I mean, that's a no-brainer. That's black and white, agricultural activities and buildings. Can you reflect on what the frame of mind was for that change? Did it get more restrictive accidentally, or?
If it got more restrictive, it was an accident. I know at the same time Maureen was going through and pulling redundant language, I can only surmise that because agriculture is permitted in all the different zones as a resource-related use, that it's redundant to say that. We were talking, that section of the site plan ordinance referred to buildings.
Yeah.
So maybe it was pulled for that reason. But I can't tell you. It was not because we intended to make it more restrictive. And to my knowledge, it was not intended on the town's part to make it more restrictive. So it could have been pulled by accident.
It, it...
What's that?
It was indeed for buildings.
Because it was buildings specifically.
That was something that confused me, because it did seem like the intent of that change was proposed by the Cape Farm Alliance, or the change was proposed by the Cape Farm Alliance, yet it took out the phrase agricultural activity, which was, which was a key phrase, I think, to keep in the zoning ordinance, and that may have just been an oversight.
No, the Cape Farm Alliance never recommended pulling that phrase. I went back and reviewed all that. That was never a recommendation from us.
Right.
What we would do is, we would submit documentation to staff, and staff would make changes to make it efficient and legal. And that was pulled by town staff.
Okay.
So I think the fact that we narrowed it down to buildings requiring site plan review is the reason. If that's not the reason, it would have to be an oversight or just for efficiency.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to clarify that point. He was correct. It was removed because it would have been redundant. Agriculture was allowed.
Sorry, can you restate your name for the right?
I'm sorry, John Green.
Thank you.
What happened was, we were focusing in on buildings that required site plan review, so we moved out markets and things that would indeed require it. Agriculture itself was allowed as a resource-related use, so that was removed out only because we were not dealing with the use, which was already allowed. So we just stuck with buildings. What would trigger site plan review for agricultural buildings? So it was not an oversight, it was just how it was, how we chose to address it, as to not be redundant, I guess.
Any further public comment?
I'm Diane Chevanel. My husband Ray was up a while ago. I promise I'll be very brief. But we live at one-eighty-nine Fowler, and we are directly next door to the Chad's, and we couldn't be happier to have them as neighbors. We've enjoyed their wonderful produce for the last few years when we can get it, and I would be thrilled to see a hoop house there, growing vegetables through the winter and all year round. And I just don't see a problem with having something like that in your own backyard, taking the produce, putting it in a truck, or however they want to get it back and forth, bringing it to their farm and into the farmer's markets. I see no difference than my getting in my car in the morning and go to work to try to make a living. And I just don't think it'll be a problem. I think they'll be a real asset, and we hope that you'll approve of their wishes. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Any of the board have questions for the Chad's before we close? Questioning period? Okay, thank you. I guess let's move to the board discussion. I guess I just had a quick question for Ben. Other than your interpretation of the ordinance, was there any other reason that you would not have permitted the application? In other words, does it comply with all other requirements?
Yes, I reviewed it for resource protection, shoreline zoning, Great Pond watershed overlay, and setbacks, everything else. It was simply an interpretation of review authority.
And again, specifically, it's nineteen-nine-two-two?
So this nineteen-nine-two-two is any non-residential expansion or change in use?
Ben, can you summarize why you don't think section nineteen-nine-two-B-three applies? Where it, C, so B-three-C, where it specifically states that any barn, greenhouse, or storage shed with building footprint that does not exceed two thousand square feet does not require a site plan review?
My interpretation was that section B applies to existing farms and is intended to allow existing farms to expand without site plan review, but that the use, the change of use is still triggered above.
This is like putting Ben in the spotlight day, isn't it?
And, I mean, your interpretation, that, that section nineteen-nine-two-B-three-C only applies to continued use, what's that based on?
It's, well, you first, the first section talks about uses, and the second section talks about buildings, and I think you had, my interpretation is, you have to have the use in order to have the building. And, you know, if, as I stated before, if the, if the greenhouse was residential in nature, I would have approved it. I do think a greenhouse is allowed as an accessory structure to residential. It's the question of non-residential to residential.
What? I mean, just...
Is the, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Isn't that the crux of the question? Is that merely because the applicant is going to sell a particular carrot, it converts it from residential to a non-commercial use? And within the concept of non-residential, excuse me, includes commercial or agricultural? Is that what we're talking about?
But doesn't, I mean, there's, when you look at the section, Residence A District nineteen-six-one, and it lists the permitted uses, and, I mean, non-residential use, there's also resource-related uses. So there's actually a whole separate category, separate and apart from non-residential uses, which are resource-related uses, which include agriculture. So I actually, I read, this isn't a, they're not, they're not, this isn't a non-residential use, this is a resource-related use. That is the purpose of the building, of the greenhouse.
Ben just mentioned that if it was for personal residential use, they can build the hoop house. Is that right?
Yes.
So then what is the tipping of the scale?
Well, it's, it's a resource-related use that, it's, you can look at it as a resource-related use that's being used in a residential fashion, or a resource-related use that's being used in a not-residential fashion.
But is that, where in the ordinance does it differentiate those two?
Well, that, that would be section two of nineteen-nine, where...
Nineteen-nine-two, A and B?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I look at nineteen-nine-two-A and B, I'm just thinking and processing this out loud. See, I see nineteen-nine-two-A as activities requiring site plan review, and nineteen-nine-two-B is activities not. So under those activities is agricultural buildings. So, I mean, I mean, the headings of A and B are activities. Now, obviously, a greenhouse isn't an activity, but you're performing an activity within the greenhouse. So just my reading of the language, I mean, I'm, I think it's allowed under nineteen-nine-nine-two-B-three-C.
That's, that's a reasonable interpretation. I mean, there's a very reasonable interpretation to allow it. I, I looked at it, and I looked at past ordinances and how the ordinance structure changed over the years. In nineteen-ninety-five, for example, the, it wasn't, there were no resource-related uses, there was just a list of uses, but the site plan section was written exactly the same, a non-residential use. And then, and then the resource-related category took it out of that, and I'm not sure that it was intended to be removed from site plan review. I, I read all the ordinances, I read all the charter document, comprehensive plan documents I could, looking for something concrete on that subject, that, you know, hoping to find something concrete on that subject, that took it out of, that they intended to take agriculture out of site plan review, and I couldn't find anything.
I agree.
So that's how I weighed my decision. But, I mean, there's, there's a very reasonable interpretation to allow it without site plan review. They make a valid case.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah. Unfortunately, nineteen-nine-two-two, just, my brain's trying to get past it. I mean, I look at...
Nineteen-nine-two-two-A-two?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot my A. You're right, I'm sorry. My apologies. The non-residential expansion or change in use. And I, I'm, I see that, but then I go, and I'm looking at nineteen-six-one, I mean, you can go right down the list. It's, agriculture is a resource-related use that's allowed.
So, meaning that this section on non-residential doesn't apply? Nineteen-nine-two, nineteen-nine, nineteen-nine-nine-two?
When I, when I look at that, coupled with activities not requiring site plan review, I, you know, I kind of, I don't, I don't think it requires, and I think, I don't think it requires site plan review, particularly now that I've heard that Ben also has taken a look at this from the resource protection standpoint as well, and it's compliant there. If there were issues there, then I'd...
Right. I mean, all, the only thing that's really before the board right now is the interpretation of, at least as I view it, is the interpretation of the ordinance as applied to the denial of the permit. Because as Ben stated, there would have been no other reason to deny the permit other than his interpretation of the ordinance.
An interpretation it is. I think that the ordinance should probably be revisited in some fashion, but I think when you do interpret it, so long as there aren't any pigs or chickens out there, or cows, then I think it appears to me that the greenhouse is permitted use.
I wouldn't comment on the pigs or chickens or cows, because that's...
Well, I'm just looking at nineteen-six-one-B-one-B, and that specifically permits agricultural use.
On lots, right.
None of us farm animals are involved.
Right.
No farm animals.
Any, any further thoughts or comments from the board? Again, I mean, the general sense that I'm hearing is that it seems like the appeal should be granted. Are there any thoughts on the other side of that that we should discuss through?
Just merely because I believe John was at the hearing in two thousand eleven, dealing with the wild...
Well, I didn't say that, but that's, I mean, I listened when that came up. I mean, I do, when this board, or any board, kind of rules in a particular way on a prior fact pattern, I mean, it's a little, well, the address is different, but I mean, it's the same fact pattern. You know, I don't like to see boards being inconsistent in rulings either.
The reason I mentioned that, I, with the little effort, I found or located a copy of those minutes, and that some of the discussion is not of the board speaking, it suggests that it's actually the former CEO speaking. So on the one hand, we're not necessarily bound by those minutes, because I think that there's some suggestion that it's not actually, the board actually holding. But ultimately, they made a decision, so that's why perhaps your recollection can help us with some of the issues that we're facing here.
I'm looking back at my memory, thinking, you know, three months ago.
Okay. I guess the other issue that I had is that, you know, in the past, when someone's doing a commercial activity at home, we've gone through the process of, it's a home business, home occupation. Why doesn't that apply here?
Because it's, because the ordinance specifically carves out agricultural use as something different from a home business.
All right. And so then, then it gets back into the issue that we talked about, resource use. And essentially, this falls within that subcategory, dealing with commercial purposes on any lot less than one hundred thousand square feet. So we are assuming that that fits with the square foot requirement.
That's a big greenhouse.
The lot itself, not... Ben had a comment on that.
That's a section for livestock, I believe.
That's down to C, sir. I was referring to B.
Yeah, I think that...
If you're raising animal or fowl, you need a hundred thousand square feet on the lot.
No, but even B, even B has a limitation.
No, I think the way, the way I read it is agriculture is permitted, provided that no animal or fowl shall be raised for commercial purposes on a lot containing less than. So I think for non-animal raising, you're right, the lot limitation does not apply.
All right. So what section are you suggesting this activity would fall within then?
Nineteen-six-one-B. Nineteen-six-one-B-one-B.
And what, under, under the sub...
The following, resource-related use, agriculture.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The one that we just talked about then, the subparagraph B. Okay?
Right.
I'm glad we got there.
Any, any other, like, it looked like you were about to say something. No, or either my...
I'll say something. I think Ben's interpretation is, is sort of reasonable. I think the ordinance is confusing. I found that hearing from a member of the Cape Farm Alliance, that their partner in the process of drafting the ordinance was very helpful. But at the end of the day, I think I agree with the rest of the board members in that it doesn't require a site plan review because it's, it's a greenhouse.
Less than two thousand square feet in size.
Less than 2,000 square feet in size, and it's a resource-related use. And just to state the obvious, that there's only, so I understood, only two parties that have objected to the application.
Correct.
Okay, and then on the other policy issues, is that the town's policy to support agriculture, you looking for other reasons to approve the application? So, we have 1, 2, those are 2 points there, and then the query that I had earlier about whether a prior use from the original source of the land is important, granted, you know, there was a farm at one time, but whether that use just gets drifted away and does not apply here, just points for consideration.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my view from, yeah, I think the ordinance is not clear, and I think it can be interpreted in 2 different ways, I think, or interpreted, and I think when you add what we've heard from the farming community and the Cape Farm Alliance as to the reasons, I think it was a considered process whereby they changed the ordinance so these types of greenhouses could be built without going through site plan, that seems like that was the intent behind some of these changes, which, you know, when you read the ordinance, you can see why some of these changes were made, and one way of interpreting it is to allow this without a site plan review. Anybody want to make a motion?
I tried that earlier.
I'll take a crack at it again. I'll make a motion that the administrative appeal of Austin Chad concerning the issuance of a building permit dated February 12, 2014, is permit number 14-0031, be upheld.
Did the appeal be upheld, or granted?
Granted.
Granted?
Granted.
I like granted.
I didn't want to say denied, but...
Right.
Granted.
Second.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we...
I think, Mike, just a second.
Seconded.
Just a second.
Can I ask you to repeat the motion one more time?
Okay. I'll make a motion that the administrative appeal of Austin Chad concerning the issuance of a building permit dated February 12, 2014, is permit number 14-0031, be granted.
Okay, and we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? The appeal is granted, 5-0. And let me just read the findings of fact. Number 1, this is an adminis...
Chair, can I make one suggestion when we get there?
Yes.
That perhaps we add to the finding of facts, a couple of the sections that we're relying upon.
Sure.
Specifically, 19-6-1, B, 1, B, which is the resource-related use for agriculture, and 19-9, 19-9, 19-9-2, B, 3, C.
Okay. Yeah, no, so 1, this is an administrative appeal of the code enforcement officer's decision to deny a building permit for an accessory structure at 191 Fowler Road, map U44, Lot 28. 2, the appellant's are Austin and Mary Ellen Chad, who reside at 191 Fowler Road. 3, on February 3, 2014, Austin Chad submitted the building permit application number 14-0031 for an accessory building. 4, on February 6, 2014, the code enforcement officer spoke with Austin Chad on the telephone, and Mr. Chad stated that he intended to use the proposed accessory structure for his produce business that is currently operating at a different location. 5, on February 12, 2014, the code enforcement officer denied the application for an accessory structure. 6, on March 10, 2014, Austin Chad submitted an application for administrative appeal to appeal the code enforcement officer's decision to deny the building permit. And then 7 will be, Section 19-6-1, entitled Residence A District RA, B, permitted uses, 1, B, states that the following resource-related uses are permitted in the Residence A District, and B is agriculture, provided that no animal or fowl shall be raised for commercial purposes on any lot containing less than 100,000 square feet, and we're also, and so, we're also relying on Section 19-9-2, B, which is entitled Activities Not Requiring Site Plan Review, and that includes under B, B 3, agriculture buildings, agricultural buildings as follows, B 3, C, any barn, greenhouse, or storage shed with a building footprint that does not exceed 2,000 square feet in Any other findings?
Do you want to make a comment about the support by the abutters?
Sure, we've heard, well, let me write this down, so...
Or a lively public debate or discussion?
Yeah, I mean...
I'm not sure of that lively...
Well, I mean, that's part of the record, right?
Yes?
You want to...
It's just the 2 abutters, I'm sorry, 1 abutter said no, but 2 abutters said yes.
Okay, we heard from 2 abutters who were in favor of the construction of the greenhouse. Any other findings of fact? All in favor?
Do you want to go as far as saying that agriculture is not a non-residential use? Because I do believe that's a crux of the interpretation, and it's something that wasn't clearly stated in the Bothel, Bothel deal.
Aren't we effectively saying...
You are, you are effectively doing it, but you don't have to add it.
I mean, I think, I don't, I mean, I'm comfortable with the ranting of the appeal and the findings of fact, and I think...
You don't want to rewrite the other ordinance?
I do not want to rewrite the ordinance.
And the ordinance was somewhat clear that there may be forms of agriculture that could be commercial or non-residential in nature, so, yeah, I agree, I don't think we need to go any further.
So, all in favor of the findings of fact? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Chad. She breaks. I'm going to go on to item 3 of the agenda, is to hear the request of Michael Chestnut, representing Candace Caru of 412 Old Ocean House Road, to construct an accessory dwelling unit in a portion of a proposed house at 5 Old Ocean House Road, map R2-1, Lot N-1.
Hello, I'm Michael Chestnut, hi.
Thank you for your patience.
You're welcome, it was very interesting. So, yeah, as you just stated, the lot on 5 Old Ocean House Road, we are going to be building a new single-family residence with an attached garage, and we are trying to get approval for an accessory dwelling unit above the garage. And any comments? I'd maybe start there, from the board? Or questions?
This is Section 19-7-5, and I have it on page 154, on or about.
That's what I was going to say, if you want me to take you through what we're...
Yeah, I just want to walk us through the 19-7-5, B requirements for the creation of an accessory dwelling, why the proposed accessory dwelling unit needs to be required.
Okay, the first one is the minimum lot size is, we have 160,000, so we have plenty of, plenty of lot size, and the floor area of the new structure will be 3,220 square feet, which is over the 1,500 required as a minimum, and we're not, we're going to be laxly less than the 25% in 3, because we're only allowed to go to 600 square feet, which we are at 591, I believe, yes, 591 on the application, which is 18.4% of the 3,220. And, I'm not quite sure, I'd like to get an opinion on 4, I'm not quite sure if I understand 4, to be honest. I was reading it before I came, and it says, "Any addition to the floor area of the single-family detached dwelling to create the accessory dwelling shall not exceed 15% of the floor area of the structure of the single-family dwelling prior to conversion."
Is the single-family home that's being built at the same time, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that is one nuance to this, whether the existing versus proposed that we have, specifically as far as point number 4 is concerned, there is no addition to the house for the accessory dwelling unit, because it's going above the garage, so it would be 0% increase, because, you know...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
What he could do is build this structure with a bonus room or unfinished space above the garage, and then he could come here and say, "I would like to do an accessory dwelling unit above the garage," there is no expansion of the existing structure, it's just going above the garage. The applicant would feel more comfortable having the approval upfront, it's a pretty big investment into the lot. They actually have the lot size, they could have 2 lots here, they have over 160,000 square feet, so they could have 2 RA-zone lots, they have plenty of frontage. The issue was, and I told Mr. Chestnut, you are allowed to build 2 dwellings, but they have to be 60 feet apart, because the zoning says you have to leave the opportunity to divide the lot. He went back to his client, and his client didn't want, didn't want them that far apart, it's basically, it's an apartment for when family visits, and they don't want to have to walk, you know, 60 feet outside when her children visit her.
And she's actually planning on moving there herself in who knows how many decades, when she gets older, she's going to move up to the apartment we're talking about, and probably give it to her daughter, the rest of the... I also noticed in the second sentence in the first paragraph, it says, "The creation of a subordinate accessory dwelling unit within a new single-family dwelling unit shall also be permitted."
Where is this now?
Second sentence in the first paragraph, A. But a lot of the language, even going to 5, no, sorry, 6, starts talking again about alteration, so it seems to be geared towards adding to existing, but yet the second sentence clearly states that it can also be part of a new single-family dwelling, too.
Can I ask a, I just got this question, why is this before us?
The approval of an accessory dwelling unit is a conditional use approval that only the zoning board can grant.
Right.
Right, but, I think, maybe you said, it's like a bonus from over, I mean, it's new construction, the whole thing's new construction.
Yes, but they, when he executes the building permit, he'd likely be able to execute the building permit for the whole structure you see, the house along with the accessory dwelling unit over the garage.
Okay.
Versus if the zoning board says that there has to be a house on the site in order for us to consider this, then the applicant would be forced to submit a building permit and say that there was going to be a bonus room or storage space above the garage, and then once the house is built and has a strictly occupancy, then they can fit out the accessory and get approval from the board to fit out the accessory apartment. It would obviously be less expensive for them to build it at the same time, and the client would be assured of being able to use the property as she wishes.
And this is considered in the ADU, because it's a structure, if you will, detached?
It's a full-gloving unit above the garage, and the only way someone can have a second dwelling unit on their property is either to separate them by 60 feet, as I said before, like double the lot size.
Or have 10 acres, and then you can do a duplex.
Yeah, and if you have 10 acres, you can do a duplex.
And I wasn't sure if I was reading that, creation of a subordinate accessory dwelling unit, I don't know where, why subordinate was in there, but would that be what we're doing, in which case it is allowed to be in a new single-family dwelling, not just an existing? That's where the second sentence I was asking about, I wasn't sure.
Chair, Josh, I'm a little, I think I'm with John here, the lot is huge.
Yes.
I don't mind if we take as long as it takes. However, we're looking at a lot that's 3 and a half, almost 4 acres, and if we, hypothetically, if the 2 structures are divided and 60 feet are there, it would pass muster. So, if we join them, and essentially, they should still pass muster unless something off that list of the 19... off that list in the seventeen, nineteen seven five B one through eight. And we're down to five already, is that right? I think we're down to five.
Yes.
This should be fairly straightforward as to the process by which we move along.
I mean, going down six, it seems like applies to...
Alteration.
Alterations, that's not the applicant here since it's new construction. Seven is, no accessory dwelling unit shall be approved for any structure that includes home occupation or business.
She's not...
Lot had issue here. Eight, single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit installed there and shall be held in the same ownership.
Right.
It's going to be held in the same ownership.
The only, I guess the only question I have is just, it's five hundred and ninety-one feet, I can read the plan, but if I'm looking at the dimensions...
Mm-hmm.
Correct, which I may not be, it looks like it's twenty-eight by...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Correct.
I don't know how to calculate, but is that five?
No, 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 it's over five ninety-one, that is over five ninety-one, but in the upper left-hand corner of, it's probably easier to look at A, A two because it's a bigger plan, if you're not already there. A two has a blown-up plan of the apartment itself.
Yeah.
The twenty-eight by twenty-four includes the stair and the landing, which is not allowed, is not, is not required to be included in the six hundred square feet, meaning the stair to get up to the apartment itself is not included in the square foot of the apartment.
That's exterior to the apartment.
Correct, so, which, which I went over with, with Ben, yeah. So, you're right, the twenty-eight by twenty-four is more than five ninety-one, but when you take out that landing, we actually included the closet at the top of the landing, the coke closet, basically, I, we did include that as a part of the five ninety-one, actually, just not the landing itself and the stair that goes down to the mudroom.
So it'd be like, I'm just doing a little swag here, but, like, twenty-eight by, I don't see a scale on this bill, twenty-eight by...
Quarter inch.
Twenty?
Um, yeah, not, yeah, maybe, maybe a little more, something like that.
I can't do it.
And what we, what we were told to calculate to is the exterior, it's two things, actually, the exterior of the exterior walls, the landing side of the closet, before you enter the house, the outside walls that are actually on the landing and stair side as you go up the page and around the toilet and the, and the shower, and then as you go to the back of the closet, the, the stair side of that, which is the left, all the way up to the exterior wall of the northern, okay, so that's, that's where the five ninety-one, that's where it's.
Chair, I have a question or two. On map A three, I only raise this because on other, on previous applications, this came up, it was about the end of that day, the height of the structure.
Yes.
On this height of this, on A three, can you represent what the height of the structure is?
Yes, I'm sorry about that, yeah, the, the walls themselves are seventeen and a half feet from grade at the old ocean house side, which would be represented in the north elevation at the bottom, which would be up to the, to the roof, and then we would add another twelve feet, so it would be twenty-seven five would be the height of the, of the peak of the roof, on both of them, because they match. So that's, and we're allowed thirty-five, so we're seven feet below that.
Yes, it looks like the terrain on SP two is fairly flat, with maybe a one or two-foot bar by the way.
Yeah.
If, if there was a slope to the land, we, that would be a potential concern, but I don't think it is here, so we can move on.
Yeah, it's, right, it's, if it is, it's maybe a few feet, two, something like that, two, two to three, which would put us at thirty, thirty-one, something like that for height. I mean, if you averaged it, I guess, is that what you're getting at?
I just, it was, you answered my questions earlier, I'm moving, moving on to my next query.
Presumably, the permit wouldn't issue if this was going to exceed the height.
The thirty, right.
Yep. And so on SP two, again, the, the late, the overlay of the proposed septic field, and it, it looks like it goes into, into the setback.
Yes. It's allowed to be within ten feet of the property line? The, you're talking about the septic field itself?
Yes.
Yes, it's allowed to be within ten feet of it.
And there is no overlay, is it an overlay issue that we've talked about? I own property in town, and we have a particular issue with that arrangement, but I think-
Oh, with the...
A wetlands issue for us, so that's not, there's no...
Right, there, there is, there's no RP one wetland here, the, the whole lot on the zoning map is actually shown in the RP two wetland zone, and, and that, that's very common in town, the RP two wetland zone is scrawled recklessly all over the map, and which is why we rely on professionals to go out and do a delineation and show us exactly where the RP two wetland is on the site, and, and they've done that, and there's plenty of upland area.
Thank you, thank you, I have no further questions.
Is there any, anybody else, anybody else on the board have questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I don't think we're going to have any public comment because there's nobody else here, so we'll move past that public comment to the board of discussion. It seems like everything that we've heard, at least from my view, everything we've heard meets the requirements for the creation of an accessory dwelling. I haven't heard anything that is a concern with respect to the request.
I would agree.
I agree.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I would...
Can I see a question? I'm sorry. How many bedrooms does the house, will the house have, including the...
Four total.
Four total, and what's...
Yeah, and the HHC two hundred has, I guess there's different gallons?
Yes, designed for, is this designed for a three?
A three-bedroom for the house, and then an apartment bedroom, I guess, has thirty gallons more a day than the bedrooms in the house. So, actually, that's a little bit of a writing error, I guess, in my, my application, when I handwrote it, said three sixty, if you look at the HHC, it's actually three ninety per day.
So just to clarify, three-bedroom house, one-bedroom accessory unit.
Right, exactly, yeah.
I assume you've, you've reviewed this, Ben, the HHC two hundred?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, you're on.
Sorry for the delay.
I move to grant request for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit as part of the construction of a single-family dwelling per section nineteen dash seven dash five of the zoning ordinance at map R zero two, lot one zero dash one, five Old Ocean House Road, which property is owned by Candace Karn.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? So that motion passes five, nothing? Can I read the findings of fact? One, this is a request for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory dwelling unit as part of the construction of a single-family dwelling per section nineteen dash seven dash five of the zoning ordinance at map R oh two, lot ten dash one, five Old Ocean House Road. The applicant is Michael Chestnut, architect. Two, Candace Karn is the owner of record of the property at five Old Ocean House Road, map R zero two, lot ten dash one. Three, the lot at five Old Ocean House Road is a vacant conforming lot in the RA zone. The zoning map shows most of the lot in the Resource Protection two, RP two district, but a wetland scientist has delineated, delineated the area of the RP two district on the property. The resulting RP two district is significantly less than that what is shown on the zoning map. Additional findings of fact, proposed use will not create hazardous traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. Two, the proposed use will not create unsanitary conditions or reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air, or other aspects of its design or operation. Three, the proposed use will not adversely affect the value of adjacent properties. Four, the proposed site plan and layout are compatible with adjacent property uses and with the comprehensive plan. Five, the design and external appearance of any proposed building will constitute an attractive and compatible addition to its neighborhood, although it need not have its similar design, appearance, or architecture. And six, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the requirements in section nine dash seven dash five dot B of the zoning ordinance. All in favor of the findings of fact and additional findings of fact? It's five, nothing. Thank you. Any communications with the zoning board? Hearing no communications, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Very adjourned.